So it's, uh, we need to start the recorder for Melanie. You might do that. We're adjusting to the remote working and everything. Melanie's on, we have to do the recorder, I believe.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so we'll come back in the session at one minute after one. Last thing we have on agenda is a fire session update. Welcome, everybody. And if you go out of protocol, welcome Commissioner-elect Barry Shulmer, even though you're not in that capacity right now. Still chief one. Yeah, yeah. So welcome, everybody. And so Barry, take over the show.
All right. Barry Shulmer, interagency fire staff officer for Fremont, Monaheim National Forest in Lakeview District BLM. Just a quick intro. 2020 fire season is a very interesting one. When we briefed you this spring, we knew that we were in COVID and we were figuring out how to work with and do the ACOM thing on the way. As an addition.
Okay.
Who's the lead on that?
Dave.
Morning.
Morning.
As you guys know, this is kind of hitting this room. It's kind of new to ACOM agreement with the landfill. This is, uh, we've already been in an agreement or in a contract, not a contract agreement with them on some engineering service. We just gave them a little, or we asked them to give us a little bit more duties. I don't know if we call it duties, but, uh, a little bit more service from ACOM than in the past to cover more of the monitoring, more of the reporting, more of the stuff. Buddy and I believe Commissioner Winters worked on this a few weeks ago. So we want to move forward on it. We are waiting, DEQ is kind of waiting on some of this agreement. Kind of doing some compliance stuff that we got to get into. DEQ, they're waiting on this. So, and I'll let Jay take it over. He knows a little bit more about it than I do, but.
This is, this is a genius idea. I think it's Brad's idea. He and Buddy talked to ACOM a couple of weeks ago. You know, we're, we're not sanitation engineers. We're not hydrologists. It looks like everyone around the state is, a lot of landfills are using ACOM and they're using them more than we were. They're having them follow through and make sure that the reporting is done, plans are updated, you know, all those things that were required for our compliance. So all this does, and this is kind of, I think, what Buddy and Brad, Commissioner Winters had asked them to do is just take one step further and make sure that, you know, they're actually filing those reports. They're, you know, getting approval on the updates to plans, to closures, to, you know, all that stuff so that, you know, we can be confident that we're staying in compliance. Right now, we're not. Like Dave said, DEQ is, I think, happy that we're going, we're entering into this kind of agreement because, um, I think otherwise they would be flipping the hammers.
So many things been used twice. I haven't been in the loop on this since we had the discussion. So I'll go ahead and give you my full on it. Whenever we got ahold of ACOM was to get a scope of work so that we could probably get three different quotes. This one came in, you don't have any other quotes. You don't have any other idea about any other cost. Haven't checked with even the local engineer or anything. I think it's a great idea to do that. But for $74,000, almost $75,000 to not get comparable quotes, it's probably not why it's spinning. Whenever Buddy and I set this up was to get a scope of work. Within this, there's a lot of things to find out within this. It doesn't even include, doesn't even include the closure site of it, which is above beyond it. There's a lot of questions asked. There's a lot of things sat down and talked about and to follow up on. So, so for me, it's pretty simple because I'm not the one to have to worry about the budget. I'm not the one to have to worry about the other things. I'll be gone January. But I highly recommend this board to look at, getting some comparables and make sure that you're not just going with the first quote that comes through. Or it might be the appropriate quote. We'd have to have some checks and balances. We have to find out what, what the comparables are out there for doing the same work.
So Dave and I talked about this. This isn't a contract. This is a, an agreement for the kinds of services we want them to provide. But it's, it's an agreement to, you know, we would pay them on a time and materials basis. So they will bill us for work that they do. If they don't do the work, they don't bill us, we don't pay them. We could hire someone else to do any, any one of, or any several of these things. Dave has had an initial conversation with the local engineer. And, but his thought, our thought is that we get this in place and then we can do some more, some more looking.
DEQ is anxious for us. You've addressed that, I haven't spoken.
Well, that's what they're waiting. The guy I talked to, Michael Kennedy, said when Buddy called him on this, this was a cushion or to keep DEQ from coming after us or type bill. I don't know, I don't know. But they come in, so Buddy told this Michael, DEQ Michael Kennedy, that you need to get this in place. We'll let you guys get something in place of what you're going to do because we're not in compliance. And then we'll look, they'll look into that on a later day.
They wanted to give us.
We get into something with the engineer where it covers what we're doing because right now we're not in compliance with DEQ standards. And that's from three different DEQ people that I've talked to since I started. So they're, they're honest. They're calling me, they're sending me stuff this week on what we're not in compliance with. So, uh, they're looking forward for us to get something like this in place so we can get it.
So which part are we in non-compliance on?
Several. Of like reporting, the quarterly reporting, some of the testing, the stormwater testing that we haven't done. Operational plans, they was never, they don't know if it's been approved or not. So there's several, several things to this that I'm, I'm getting feedback. I mean, I, I don't know the past, so it's hard for me to kind of explain all what happened in the past. But I do know what DEQ is asking of the county right now. But I've been on, I've been in contact with by several different ones, from three different ones so far that have been centering stuff. So, and I'm kind of getting off track here.
Was it the 1200 contract, the 1200 permit?
No.
1200 Z permit?
No, I know, we already took care of that.
Okay.
This is just the stormwaters, the, I don't know the terminology yet, I'm still.
Well, the revised, doesn't the 1200 Z permit fall under the stormwater pollution?
Yeah, that's the permit.
Yes.
You still got reporting that you have to do and stormwaters.
So, Commissioner Winters, you're saying that originally you just wanted this as a scope of work?
Whenever Buddy and I met with DEQ and with ACOM, at that time, it's sort of a little bit different direction than the counties went, was working towards with Jay of some employees out there. Different structure than right now. And it was set up to utilize a couple of different people. ACOM was the first one we got hold of to run a contract with them.
Already.
I don't even know if, if this is in addition to $75,000 cap, in addition to what they already are getting paid or not.
Well, that, that's what.
It's not in addition, it's a total. So we've been paying them somewhere in the $60,000 range.
Looking at.
We may not pay them any more than we have in the past. It just depends on.
So you're saying all the work that they're doing now is encompassed in this?
Yeah.
That is not the way it came across when I met ACOM.
That's the way it reads. It's not to exceed numbers for all these tasks.
For this, but all of the other things they were doing prior to this?
They've been, they were doing these things, but they weren't, they weren't taking that a step further. They weren't getting to the point where they would submit the reports and.
So it's clear as much?
What's clear is this is, these six tasks are everything that we need to do to be in compliance. They're going to assure that we're, we're staying up on those. Except for the operational plan, I think. And that's something that we have, but I guess it never been approved in.
And if you read in here, it's also on the closure.
So the closure is included. I'm not sure what part of closure you're talking about, but task four is the closure documents. Are you talking about the, or that's the plan? I mean, uh.
So just for a second here, Ross and Kelly is on the line. Ross and Kelly will be just a few minutes, we're going to finish this item and then we'll get right to you.
No worries.
So they would update the plan as required and then follow through with the closure certification report. Actually does not include closure certification report task. Yeah, I don't know what else there is to.
But were, but were they under, did they have that requirement before in the previous contract? So it's basically whether or not we actually even want to include that?
Yeah, and that's the way they, that's the reason they haven't included it because it's something that they think that either we need to do or we can do without their help.
So was that included in the scope of work originally? Didn't sound like that was even asked of them.
Yeah, I don't know what was asked of them. But in task number six, we have a kind of a catch-all. They will provide consultation.
Number six?
I think that's kind of where we're at. We're starting over, we're maybe slightly out of compliance. To get caught up, we might have to have them help us with some things that they would normally be helping with, helping us with on a year-to-year basis. But again, you'll notice there's no termination clause or expiration date. This isn't a contract. It's, these are the services we want them to provide. But, um, we can have them provide them or we cannot have them provide them. If they don't provide them, they won't pay, we don't pay them. We could hire somebody else to do that. So I think this will get us on the ground rolling and.
Get us to that position where we can actually start working with DEQ. This is basically what they're waiting for, was my understanding was for us to, yeah, sort this portion of the issue out. Do you have any other thoughts on this?
I don't, I don't have any questions. You and Mark need to, need to make a call with ACOM with DEQ. Like I suggested before, that's what I suggested to use it.
Yeah.
To do that, so. You're at a point, you don't have much choice because you don't have the person that has the knowledge on all this and everything.
Right.
Compared to me, you don't, it's down to crunch time.
Well, you've been, you've been in touch with Buddy. You've kind of talked to him a little bit about this.
Very little.
Yeah, on this particular subject, yeah. And you have reached out to the other surveyor, county surveyor?
Little bit, I reached out with Bill Anderson. Very little.
So can we make it a temporary deal until we go through the procedures to, look to see if we, if there's other people that can do the job?
Well, Commissioner, it sounds like it's not a contract. So whatever is not in compliance, you can go to whoever you want. It doesn't mean, I mean, I don't look at it that way. I look at it signed into that is an agreement, which is the same as a contract. It's an agreement for services. But that, I'm being told here in the meeting that it's not. So if that's the case, if it piecemeal out what can be done locally, you just go locally and have them do it. If you're in a hurry to get into compliance with the stormwater or whichever other one, or it's a compaction or if it's the closure of the landfill, or there's a lot of things have to be done on the closure of the landfill. That's in the process right now. So, um, but what's being said in the meeting today is, is that whatever section of this you need to be done, you just pay four days, you get it done.
But it's not to exceed.
It's not to, well, that sounds more like a contract to me.
Well, yeah, but it's an agreement for services.
But don't we have, don't we have to get three quotes for anything over $5,000 bucks?
I, that's where I started the conversation at, Commissioner. ACOM is probably the one, but for following the rules and everything, you would think you would get three quotes, especially for, and there's quite a bit of landfill work had been done locally on engineering and things over the years. Just to give opportunities and cover your guys' bases.
Well, my understanding was, sorry, Dave.
I'm just saying, I feel that we can do that.
Yeah.
We can go get three quotes. We're having the discussion, okay, we can go do that. It's not showstopper. I feel that I can go and get three quotes. But as we got this, I didn't know all the, where everything went. So we were just kind of throw downs to get to do this.
So what, what I'm asking, right, I could go and get three quotes. That's, that makes sense to me.
What were you saying, Commissioner?
Go ahead, Mark.
So I, what I was asking is, so can we go ahead and use them? So we're getting into compliance and then go ahead and get three quotes?
Well, I would say the priority thing right now is to get the quarterly things caught up on the stormwater. There's, the stormwater out there, there's work needs to be done at the site itself because of the E COLI is too high. And the E COLI is too high because rodents and other animals and work that needs to be done. So there has to be some physical work done. There's a place in Clamath that you can actually send samples to. And you have to get your quarterly things caught up that are behind. That's probably the first and foremost priority, to my knowledge. And then you have all your other normal operations out there that has fallen behind. You're in the middle of a contract on the landfill closure. It has to be degraded, it has to be documented, it has to all be done by the rules. That is a thing that what's not to put in the scope of work from ACOM because of, Buddy believed he was able to do that. I don't know where that's at.
But it was never, was it ever in the former contract or the former agreement that we had with ACOM to them?
Some of our landfill manager took care of all these things that we're asking ACOM to do now.
Right.
That's all a part of the duties of.
Right.
The landfill supervisor.
Right.
And so now, and it makes perfect sense because the Jargon, the DEQ Jargon and everything goes with it. You contract out by a bit of it. Whoever is your landfill manager, whatever skill levels they have and whatever education they have, should be able to knock some of these things off but then your cost doesn't go up to $75,000. So that, that's, that was the structure that I was working on for you guys to build and take and go forward. But it's where it's at now. But that, that, that will help you to be able to reduce your ACOM contract if that's who you build with, market elements, if you build with. I don't want to climb with you as an example, any of them. But you do need an engineer or somebody to get your landfill manager as they're, they get education, the training and everything reduces those costs because they start becoming, getting down that house. So you're basically going to use whoever this is as a trainer. You can pay to train with somebody, hopefully for long-term for every landfill.
Right. But I mean, the whole original point of this agreement was to reduce the amount, reduce the learning curve, so to speak, because whoever took it over and also to, to help them and to reduce the amount of work that they have to do and to get us back into compliance. That's why the scope of work was put out for in the first place, am I mistaken?
Not true, not true, but the scope of work was absolutely without compliance.
Right, right. But we're, we're looking at ACOM, who we're already in agreement with and try and get us back to that point. So to simply, yeah, I just tried to figure out, we felt like we were going two different ways there. And I was trying to understand the process of what.
I was thinking way past the moment. The moment was a plan for operations for the county.
Right.
A plan for reduced cost for the county as far as engineering cost and the casitas client. They just continue to find, so you get the operations to build around the expertise to cut those engineering costs.
I understand what you're saying, Dave.
And so I was, I was out.
I'm just not sure that that's not what we're doing now.
It, it, I'm good. I, I just, I'm just putting things out there for you and Mark to think about because this doesn't go away.
Right.
Whatever structure you decided to go with, you have to, more than the moment, you better be looking for several years down the road.
Yes, absolutely.
Have we talked to LEO Council about being able to purchase services à la carte for the time being and then sign the agreement afterwards? Would that work for your reasons short term?
Well, I brought this to LEO Council and he, he said it was appropriate, so.
So he didn't mention needing to get three quotes?
No.
But that it's à la carte, is that how that works?
No.
I didn't know what you said.
You broke up there a little bit, Melanie, I think.
So since we're just using certain services, it's kind of like an à la carte menu? Does that get us around the three quotes? Is that what he said?
Well, it's, it's not a, I don't know if it gets us around it. It's just, it's not a contract. It's, it's a simple agreement of not to exceed. And we're already in agreement with these guys. We're just, we're looking at what else they can help us with and kind of expanding it slightly to try and help us get back further into compliance. But we already have an agreement with these guys and it's been in existence. When was the actual original agreement?
2017.
Oh, okay.
We had a different one before them.
Mark Inger?
Inger.
Yeah, that's right.
Inger, associate.
Right, okay.
So October 2017 is when we started with ACOM.
Okay, that's right. Well, I'm, I'm comfortable, we can, we can put this forward for action tomorrow or more discussion. Yeah. We have Minnogarvis on the line, so.
Okay. All right, Mark, James is good with action consideration tomorrow? Pretty good?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to Ross and Kelly.
Commissioner Winters, can I just ask Melanie a question real quick?
Yes.
Okay, Melanie, is everything functioning properly? You feel comfortable with the meeting and stuff?
Everything seems.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm leaving then.
Okay, thanks Nikki.
Yeah, I'll kind of turn everything off when it's over.
Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you, Mel, or Nikki. And thank you for being on with Melanie. All right, Ross and Kelly, we have you give us an update on supportive housing.
Yeah, and Ross got tied up in another meeting, so I apologize. You just, you just get me and we didn't want to take up too much of your time, but somebody suggested that we give you an update. We done it for the, the hospital board recently as well. And we're, we're, we're moving forward. We feel like it's obviously been a challenging process thus far, but we anticipate that the rest of it going significantly smoother than it has to date. We, we have MOUs from key partners that were important for the next phases and we are a high priority as far as, as funding for the project. So it is, it is moving forward. And I, I mean, we're, we're basically reaching out in hopes that if there is any specific concerns or requests that you at the county level have, that we can integrate those into the process as we, as we move ahead. It's currently at architecture for preliminary drawings and now would be a, a good time if there's specific things people have input on to integrate those.
Awesome.
Okay, did you have any questions or feel free to reach out to us if things come up? It, it's easy to get moving ahead on a project and thinking everybody knows what's going on and oftentimes there's voids in the, in the knowledge transmission, so.
Yeah, I, I don't really have too many questions. The update sounds good. Glad things are kind of moving along. Yeah, so I was just thinking about the project last month, kind of wondering where things were at. And I hadn't had a chance to kind of look back with Kristi Albertson or any of the other folks. So, no, this is good to know.
Yeah, they're meeting regularly and everybody has, you know, once the holidays are over, a number of things will kick into gear. But we anticipate funding by spring.
Sounds good.
I have none. You've, you've been working on that for the most part or working with that group for the most part? Not this particular one, this group. I have no questions. Commissioner Albertson, any questions?
No, I don't have anything, thank you.
All right, thanks for giving me a few minutes. You guys have a Merry Christmas.
You too, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly.
Bye-bye.
See you, guys.
So we, everything else is timed except for we got mining commission reappointment request.
Yeah, and then we got the EOCI, IGA. Darwin's not here, actually, just going to text you.
Okay, you want to have some slower committee discussion?
Yes. Oh, that, that'd be good. I don't know why it's up here. I just noticed. I was going to hand it to Dave, but it ended up he would have to get up again, so. But yeah, the EOCI, IGA, I think I printed you out a copy of that as well.
Yes, you did.
So it's, I want to go back over this actually real quick. If my board will indulge me really briefly just to kind of skim through this again because this is a new, fresh copy. I don't have any notes or anything on it.
Oh, Commissioner Albertson, we're on the EOCI, IGA.
Do you have a copy of that, Mark? You should have it in your email.
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Was there anything that you wanted to discuss? Was there anything that you wanted to discuss?
Um, I'm good. Agreement.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there are really any changes to this.
It doesn't say what the cost is.
It has the dues, that's what I was looking for because I couldn't remember what the dues structure was.
Ten thousand dollars department number, right?
Right.
Yeah.
This one, it says.
We pay ten thousand dollars.
Is it, is it still ten thousand? It hasn't changed because this says.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
And that'll be due again in July.
Okay. Because it says the county's dues shall not, shall be in accordance with the dues schedule adopted April twenty twenty. And I don't remember if there was anything changed back in April for their dues structure. They adopted a different dues structure. Or if they, if they, if they modified it, so to speak. I'm, I'm good with it aside. That was, that was the thing that I was looking at when I was reading it, that I didn't actually see a, a price on it or an actual number, cost. So maybe, Mark, do you, do you have any notes on that or do you, do you remember?
It was a lot of time that I see the dues structure, it was ten thousand dollars.
Okay, so as far as to our knowledge, it hasn't changed. If we're. Okay. Well, if we have this on our agenda for action tomorrow, it might be good to just look at exactly what that cost is going to be and if it has changed. And maybe, maybe me or you, we could reach out to Paul or Matt or any of the folks in Alawa County and find out if, if there was any changes. If not, I'm comfortable with it.
Oh, I'll, I'll, thanks right now. And while I'm on, can Melanie, can you have Josh call me after the meeting's over? So I can get my computer hooked up here at home.
Okay, she's giving you a thumbs up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that'll be for action tomorrow. Did Darwin respond to your text?
Yes, he did.
Yes, he did.
So is there anything preventing us from moving, from having this, doing this even in January? If we didn't want to do it right now?
What did that, uh?
Uh, the EOCI agreement.
Well, you've already paid the dues, this is just an agreement.
Right, the, the agreement for going forward. I, I just, I was wondering if it might be good to have the Commissioner-elect be involved in, in this process and be part of that discussion as well. So he can kind of start working with us on those things and stuff, or he can be part of that decision.
I don't have a problem with that myself at all, that, that's.
But we've already paid the dues. I'm just wondering if maybe this, this, it would give us an opportunity to at least have that discussion with him in January.
Yep. Well, and I, I, yeah, I think that'd be fine.
Mark, do you have any problems with that?
No, that's.
I, I don't have any problems with it, but we can go from there.
Okay.
You know what it's like, you're first.
Yeah.
Quite.
I, I.
But it starts, I appreciate that it starts out the ownership with.
Those are the, these are the associations that we kind of work with. And there, there are some different issues on the D side of Oregon and rural Oregon, but. And this kind of shows why, you know, Commissioner Albertson and I kind of felt it was important. And even before our time goes, you know, the previous board, you and the other commissioners felt that it was important at least at one point in time. And I, I'm trying to be cognizant and just respectful of the fact that, of your position on this as well.
Well, I'm, I'm not opposed, I just think the dues are a lot for what she did. And it's double over a lot of the other association work. Or sometimes it, it doesn't complement or they don't communicate well. But I think there's people that are starting to push and work and that is changing some. So I, I believe that the EOCI, East American Coalition or whatever, I remember about that from. I believe that there, there's people that are starting to understand that value of AOC and EOCI and everything has to come closer together.
Right.
And it may cycle someday where it's just a subgroup of AOC, you know, right? But.
So, so I did talk to Jan Niffle about it probably a month or two ago. And she thinks that at two hundred eight, EOCI also is a very good trend. Because I didn't want to step out and ruin our relationship with AOC. And so I was just making sure that her own, they, they, she thought that trying to make the EOCI also is a good idea.
I think, I think things did change with the lobbyists. I think having the same lobbyists for both groups and in my opinion, I'm just, I'm speaking pretty openly here. I, I think the idea of both associations taking a large amount of dues to pay the same lobbyists to do the same job was a, a big part of some of the frustrations that were coming out of, you know, why the membership kind of went away. And, and for the amount of, and what we were getting out of it at the time, I actually would agree probably wasn't, wasn't worth what we were putting in. And I mean, Rocky's doing a pretty fantastic job. He's very involved and he's got a lot of connections at the state capital and, and back in DC. So it's, it's been good to kind of have him on board. So there have been some changes. There's been changes in the structure and the leadership and everything and kind of, and even the goal and kind of what we're wanting to do. We've had the same discussion as far as Eastern Oregon and the name of the group, like wanting to focus on rural issues, sometimes more than just Eastern Oregon issues, even though Eastern Oregon is just unique. It, it just has, geographically, we're in a, we're in a very different place, especially on the forestry issues.
You, you guys are, you guys are too young in your tenure as commissioners to remember Ben Boswell. But his name was, you've been to one county, you've been to one county.
Right.
Eastern Oregon, Western or whatever. And, and so pretty well said, commissioners, you know, Eastern Oregon is unique in its own way. And we have some issues that need to be dealt with just for Eastern Oregon.
Right.
But the caution for me, and I really appreciate that you collapsed on this, Commissioner, is you don't want to alienate your fellow commissioners and fellow counties across the state yet. You, you have, it's, it's, Eastern Oregon has uniqueness. You want to deal with some Eastern Oregon uniqueness, but there's things that impact all rural Oregon for the D side of the site, so.
Yeah.
I, I think, and I feel like that there's, the commissioner, it's really starting to work that way. Instead of just.
Sitting in their sidewalk.
Complaining and bitching, sorry. And, and.
Oh, you did it.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There, there's some, some that are that way and there's some people that get action, get things.
And we all fall there. We all end up there ourselves sometimes.
And we get through the meetings and we say, man, that was not productive. Yeah, yeah, so anyways, I, I know that, I think it's a good idea for Commissioner Schunberger coming on to be a part of, they'll have the discussion, you guys can work on their work session, have the discussion and explain what's going on, I think that'd be great. I think it starts bringing that ownership of the new commissioner into something that's of value for the county town.
Right. Just, just my thought on it. I don't, so if we could have that maybe moved from the agenda tomorrow, Melanie? Or, or really not, we can even leave, just leave it on there.
Continue, continue.
We'll just probably have it continue.
To the first meeting in January.
Do you want discussion tomorrow or do it continue it? Sorry.
We'll just continue.
Yeah, we, we'll just continue it. I mean, this, it doesn't matter.
Wait, so you want to table it until January or continue it tomorrow?
Table it to January.
Yeah.
Copy.
Copy. All right, we have been joined by Santa Claus.
Yes. Thought this mask appropriate for the season?
That, that's an aggressive mask that captures all the COVID.
No, can't see it. Can you see me now?
Interviewed it, Mel, I really.
I love it.
Yes.
That's awesome.
All right, so we have reappointment, you're asking for tomorrow.
Yeah.
Positions number five and six, Ben Holderman and Terry Crawford. That's the, the planning commission's making that recommendation.
Yeah, they are. You know, this is interesting time for me as planning director that the longest any of our plan, current planning commissioners has been on since two thousand sixteen. And so both these combined haven't served a full term yet, a four year term. So Terry, as you remember, last year was just appointed for, to finish out a term for a year.
Right.
Ben's been on for two and a half years or something like that, so. You know, I didn't notice like we normally would, we need to have some, you know, institutional knowledge built up in that. And so having them both was the recommendation from the planning commission to continue to serve and not for fewer terms.
Okay.
So.
And they're working out really well.
Yeah, they're, they're great. I mean, you know, we're, we're, you know, having call in meetings. I think starting in January, we'll start doing, we will start doing this video conferencing as well. So all the notices I sent out will have the link to this platform so we can have people video in so you know, so see their faces when they talk and while the option to mute people on our end so that we don't have too much feedback when people are talking over each other.
Who, who just joined us virtually, health security?
Peter Brewer, Oregon DEC.
All right, Peter, we're ten minutes away. I came up, health security, so I didn't know what that was. So we'll, we'll continue meeting and we'll get you back here in just about ten minutes.
So yeah, it's a simple request and you're getting a call.
Hang on.
And now we have a call.
Hello?
Hey, sorry, I got, just kidding.
Oh, we didn't even know we lost.
We didn't, I didn't. We didn't miss you at all, man.
That, that's really good, you guys.
All right.
Welcome back, Commissioner.
And, and just to catch you up, we were talking with Darwin. Were you, did you, was Darwin here when you left or fell off?
I don't know.
Okay, so Darwin's here, we're just talking about the planning commission appointments. Also, Peter Brewer has joined the conference on the go to meeting for his presentation at ten o'clock.
All right.
So yeah, we're, well, Terry, Terry's been excellent, both have been excellent. I appreciate both of them giving the service to, to the county at large. And so being able to bring issues up and, and both of them want to continue to serve and they're happy to do so. So yeah, that's, that's the planning commission's recommendation, but it's also mine. And have you guys read on those guys for terms ending December thirty first of twenty twenty four.
Okay, that'll be an action item for tomorrow. The other thing you have is you want to have a solar committee discussion.
Yeah, so at our last planning commission meeting, you know, I, I gave them a briefing on what you guys as the board have decided to set up a solar committee to discuss the solar rules that we have in the county and we need to update those at any level. And so you know, I, the discussion centered around, you know, the process of, you know, this committee then giving a recommendation to the planning commission, then to the board of commissioners. Ultimately, somewhere in that process would be an application if there is a recommendation for a zoning ordinance, tax amendment change, so we would add new code to our zoning ordinance. And that, you know, three level process, really, the planning commission felt it would be best if, if really this committee would, would meet with the full body of the planning commission. So we don't just have one or two members of the planning commission, they would be appointed to that committee to then have way more information in the discussion than, than the rest of the planning commission want to have. And so I also mentioned that, you know, there's going to be a lot of training that goes on with this, you know, on just land use law in general and how, how these processes work. And so planning commission really want to give you guys, you know, their opinion that, that this, this committee should meet with them as a whole. And they were willing to meet more than once a month if need be, if the committee really got off the ground and started making some dialogue discussion that's, that's productive. So they, I did mention that in January, I wanted to have a, a training that DLCD has also agreed either, most likely just remotely to call in and give. I haven't finalized those details, but if they are unavailable, I'll at least give somewhat of a training as we're looking like only having one application on planning commission's agenda for, for January. So their, their recommendation also would be to meet the hour before a planning commission would normally start, which is six PM, so they would meet, this committee could meet at five. We'd go for an hour, if need be, then we could, we could table, you know, table that discussion or recess that discussion to come back after the rest of the planning commission business for the regular agenda has been taken care of.
Okay.
So that, that's just what they thought, but if, if, if you guys do want to continue, and I know a lot of, you know, particulars have been ironed out and the focus of this, this group, I know we've got, I think it's four.
Four people, huh?
Appointed to it so far. But they said that if you do want them to meet separately, then they did give two recommendations. Terry Crawford, you know, which would kind of represent the North Lake. She's, she had mentioned in the planning commission meeting that she'd been to all of the FSAT hearings that had happened for obsiding up there when they were in person and has called in on the others. And then down here, either Jim Walls or Wes Davies, Jim being the first nomination. But he did, then she did have a little bit of bias towards solar being on irrigated ag land. And if there was too much, that he would, he'd be fine to step back and have, have Chair Davies of the planning commission serve on that committee. So that's, that's kind of my report, I could go into more detail, but that's, that's a good start.
Just a couple of questions from my, my views on it. You have to be cautious with the planning commission because they go by the laws and all this of fostering personal opinions in different things. Don't have a problem with the whole finding commission being there, but that does put it into a public meeting. And there being minutes kept, it's quite a bit added work. Press is welcome, all that stuff is regular because the finding commission is.
And I would notice it that way, and I think in some ways, maybe that's, that could be beneficial to, to the whole planning commission as a whole, because if not, then if it's not really a public meeting, it's a subcommittee that doesn't possibly require minutes and, and recording of the meeting, then the planning commission, if it was just two members, may come going, how did you come to that conclusion? And be really almost a start over, right? And going, okay, well, we're not going to push anything forward unless we really have a complete line as well. So a lot of training.
Yeah, so the plan, I don't know, like, we've talked about having a moderator or.
Yes.
Whatever.
Yeah.
If it's an official planning commission meeting, then the chair would run it, you know, get a moderator. I just, I don't think it's a bad idea, I'm just trying to think structurally, challenges. Before you get to the fittings, the challenge would be you'd have to limit the amount of public comment, a public comment as requested. Before you get to the finish, the challenge would be you'd have to limit the amount of public comment or public comment as requested. Or if you're reading, it could go really sideways.
Oh, agreed. And it's, and it's interesting because we have, like you say, we have four people on that committee right now. But we don't have any members of the planning commission on that committee. So, you know, really, they're not, the planning commission wouldn't be acting as a part of that committee. We're just based on the structure that we would give them. I have a bunch of stuff written up on this, but I wasn't sure where we were going to go, especially after the two folks that we were looking to have moderated, both declined. They couldn't do it just because of scheduling and everything. We had, we had Jamie Davis and we had Kendall as well, and they both were unable to do it. But because of that, Darwin and I had had a discussion and we thought maybe, maybe we could work with the planning commission and have that go that route. But the planning commission wouldn't be part of that committee. But it'd still be a public meeting. But they won't be, let's say, if you had a couple of different people on that committee that we appoint, we appointed a few of different bodies. Anything that they came to a conclusion to isn't necessarily impacting anything that the planning commission does. Because the planning commission isn't actually a part of that committee.
I, I see where you're going. I think the planning commission as a whole is not a bad idea. I think it's a good idea because they're the ones that have to interpret the laws or the ones that have to make unpopular decisions that's decided by the law, not by emotions.
Right.
Whether it's irrigated farm ground or it's what somebody thinks is waste ground, another person thinks is really great ground.
Right. And there's a lot of broad definitions there.
Yeah, they would bring in their parameters along with the director of our parameters are here. Which could, could educate plus help build for the board of commissioners to be able, if there's any reason to change it. Want to change ordinance or look at comprehensive plan or need those type of things, right?
So on the, on the lines of a moderator, you know, I, I look at my role as this as, as kind of need to be that in a way. Because I don't make decisions on solar projects. You know, I, I present, you know, materials given to me from both sides, you know, opposition or the applicant and build a staff report that covers those things. And so, but I know, you know, the state law applies directly in all cases on solar projects. It's a listed use in, in these zones. And so people, anyone can apply. But then there's certain laws that already apply. And I think a lot of folks just don't realize how much law there is already out there that applies. And what condition we can also include. If there's clear objective standards, then we can, we can apply them whether they're written down as criteria or not in our code. And the planning commission has, has a lot of discretion there in, in being able to make a decision that, that benefits the whole area or at least comes to, to try to balance out any of the negative effects that might, might result in a, in a project going forward. But nothing's guaranteed just because someone applies. You know, say Blue Mar, for example, there's nothing been approved yet. I mean, you know, the opposition that's been raised is, is, everyone's aware of this project and it's just beginning stages, so.
Going back to what you were saying about you being a moderator and you're good at it. I mean, and I understand the role that you play on the planning commission as the planning director. I, I, I want to make sure that it's understood though. And I can build, I can submit what I have kind of written up already. And I kind of have a little bit better chance to have this discussion. Like this discussion was key for me to be able to kind of complete some of the sideboards, so to speak, for the actual committee. Because I needed to kind of know where we were going. Because we kind of lost some of our opportunity with having a different moderator. But if you're going to be the moderator, say, if that's where the board kind of is wanting you to go, you need to, I, I want to be cognizant at least of that is going to be taxing for you. That's going to be additional because of the nature of your work and, and what you've already been doing as the planning director. We, I just want to make sure that, you know, that, that there's no, it, it's going to make it more challenging. It's just going, what, all the challenges that you've addressed already, it's just going to make it that much more.
Well, not having me as. I want, I want to throw in with that. And I think Darwin's excellent and he would not be looked at as moderator. He would be looked at as a planning director and all this. And a moderator is to not.
Since neutral party.
Neutral party, and that's what we talked about before. A neutral party has an agenda and gets through it.
Which is still fine.
Once you're the planning director, you're not anything.
It's hard to take that hat off. We can say it, but it's like, it's like every time Brad says, I'll take my commissioner hat off, my laugh.
Yes.
And I know he says that jokingly too, but.
You, you try to, but, but people are, you, you cannot.
You get away from it. Yeah, it's.
Just, well, I'll tell you most, you know, either way, there's a lot of work in this. I, I think it's double the work. If, if we've got a committee that's formed that's separate from a planning commission.
I understand.
Separate from a process that, that I'm fully involved with. I mean, this committee could have, you know, had me just there, but not as a key role. And I, I need to be a key role and that's all I'm saying. So keep working on the sideboards and I am planning to have a meeting if it concludes a committee in January, fine. If it doesn't, it could be just a finding commission.
Well, I, I think, I'm, I'm, I tell you guys, I'm encouraged because it's staying going. And, and it's necessary. You guys need to get there, we need to get there. I'm glad that the planning commission takes their role serious and wants to be a part of it.
Yeah.
Because of planning commissioners, they want to make the right decision. They'll have to be upheld all the way through the process. So I'm very encouraged that everybody's interested. We have a ten o'clock. So do you want to have further discussion later on this or anything or?
Darwin, Darwin, yeah, I mean, if you need to step out, that's perfectly fine. I do have a liaison update that I would like you to be present.
Yeah, I can step out.
Okay.
So, so we're going to move, we got Peter Brewer, we have him scheduled for ten o'clock. Wel- welcome, Peter. P M two point five update.
Yes, I'm Peter Brewer, Oregon DQ. As you know, Chair Winters and Commissioner Williams, glad to be here. Give you the annual update to our P M advance program and just essentially an update of what's going on with P M two point five.
And Peter, we have Commissioner Albertson on the phone. Just so you're aware. He, he, he's on the phone, not on the screen.
Oh, we have, we have Commissioner Albertson on the phone. Just.
Oh, okay.
Just, just to let you know, he, he's there as well. Yeah.
Thank you. I'd help a lot. Commissioner Albertson, I'm talking to you also. Okay, now Melanie, I didn't know if you wanted to pull up the document I gave you or let me share a screen and I pull up my document.
Okay, she's looking into it, looks like. Let me expand that so you can.
You don't have to be good. You're muted, Melanie.
Yeah, you, Melanie, you're muted.
Oh, um, I cannot give permission. I don't, oh, I can, never mind. Okay. Peter, you should be the president now.
Okay, screen, let's see, will do. Is it popping up yet?
Oh, perfect.
Okay. Alright. So you see the document just fine yet, looks like it. Okay, so like you P M advance there, a, a plan update. We did go over this last year, if you remember. So there's, of course, there's not a whole lot of changes year to year, but a few highlights. Like to just kind of cover in general. This year, we, we did, we did really well this last year, actually, with P M two point five where levels were a bit lower. Where, you know, standard is thirty five micrograms per cubic meter. On a, a three year average of that top ninety eight percentile of data. So a lot to swallow right there. But last year's value was, was nice and fairly low, as we'll see. Overall, though, our three year average is still above the standard at this time because of the problematic twenty seventeen year we had. Where we were more like fifty some micrograms for the year. Because we're, we're just getting our program really rolling at the time. We had new, new people on board and we were a bit behind on making sure people are compliant. Anyway, so we're, right now, we are above the standard on three year average, yet in the last two years, we've done really well. We've reduced air quality or, or reduced the levels of P M two point five a bit. Cause we'll go over here in a minute. And some of our, you know, our strategies continue to be about the same that we do. Although we tried a few more things. We had a grant project this last year that we worked on and we'll talk about a little bit. But we're continuing on with the program. We've got a few new personnel involved at this time. And they're getting involved and trained up and contributing to new ideas to our program. And yeah, anytime if you've got questions or something, speak up. Okay, overall, well, we've got our one single air quality monitor at Center and M Street, if you recall. It's been there for a long time. It continues to be our monitor. I would personally, I'd like to get another monitor in town. One of our cheaper, lower cost monitors, for example, maybe down by the hospital, somewhere a little in the south area more. Be nice to have at least one, if not two others, spread out around the community. So people in the community can see what's going on with their quality in their community, not just that one spot there at Center and M. So it doesn't apply quite to everybody. Alright, so you see on our yearly, our yearly values, we had this, this terrible year in twenty seventeen, but we've done really well the last two years. Of course, we're almost a full year behind right now. And I'm about two months in behind bringing this update to you, which I'll, I'll blame mostly on COVID. But yeah, last year we did really well. And I think this year we're, if everything's still goes very well in the next couple of weeks, we'll, we'll come out okay. We should come out below the standard okay. Of course, backing out wildfire data. We had, we had some, of course, plenty of days with high wildfire smoke this last year. But that doesn't count against us towards our reckoning with the standard. So we'll jump down to the three year average. The standard is based on the, the three year average of those. It's about the third highest data point each year of, of, of data we have. So with that twenty seventeen year still factored in and I jump back up here. We had this really low year in twenty sixteen. That was just phenomenal. And that kind of hurts you though, when you, when you're averaging out with a couple of years ago, hey, we're doing really well. Well, this is so far below the standard. You get anywhere up above the standard and that year rolls out or you're three year averaging. And then, yeah, we've got, now we're just a little bit above the standard. Right now though, EPA is not judging whether we're in compliance with the standard or not. So that's the, the best news here in, in many ways is we're officially over the standard right now. But EPA is not drawing that line, you know, saying, oh, you guys lose, you're not attainment with air quality. And, and all those implications there. There's lots, lots of implications on our economic front. But fortunately, EPA is not doing that. They wouldn't look at where, if you're in compliance or not for another year or two. And it, and it may not, since EPA, I think, just formally proposed to hold the standards at the same level. It went through draft, you know, public notice and all that. But just finally now, they formally announced, okay, we're going to keep their quality standards the same as they are. They won't, EPA won't look at us to see if we're in attainment or out of attainment with their quality standard for at least a number of years. So that's good, good news there. Gives us a chance to keep working on our program. Let's see. You can see how, again, just compared to the standard, we're doing pretty well now on the annual level. We're doing pretty well. We're down below this twelve microgram line. We usually, unless we have a terrible wildfire season, we have pretty good air quality year to year. It's something that's nice and the health of our, our citizens are, are generally day to day. They're exposed to prelude levels of particulate matter. Any questions on, on where we were this last year and where we are with the standard? Okay, we did get emissions update this year, emission inventory, I should say. It's kind of taking a look at all the potential sources of particulate matter in, in the Lakeview area within the U G B, in this case. Some of it's based on the national emission inventory, kind of a, a program. It is a county by county reckon, tries to do a county by county reckoning of, of emissions for P M two point five across the whole country. So some of it's based on that and the others are based on our local data that we have. I tried to, as much as I could influence it, put a sharp pencil to it and get rid of things that weren't real, that weren't happening. So like we had asked about industrial wood, or rather a commercial wood furnaces, wood boilers or like a wood, wood heater for a six unit apartment building. And we don't really know of, or a hydronic heater, a big wood fired kind of boiler that heats up, say, water or heat exchange fluid that's then used within a building to heat all the rooms. No one really knew of any active operations, operations like that in the town or, or within the county, actually. But initially just focusing on the U G B area. And so there were a lot of emissions on a national inventory that would be attributed to these, these wood furnaces. But we just don't really have them in operation. There's some old ones in old buildings that aren't being used. But we're able to back out those numbers out of, of emission inventory. One thing I don't really know on residential open burning, if there is much of that going on. I don't have really good ground truth for that. It's not allowed at this time of year. But the emission inventory, I'd say some people still do it. I'm not so sure. So that's, that's some areas. So these, these are all kind of taken with a grain of salt. They aren't, aren't rock solid numbers added painstakingly in, in Lakeview. Other areas, sources or even things like, I'd say grilling hamburgers or running, running char boilers or grills in a restaurant. And a number of other sources. But that's, I'm not quite sure on those numbers that they're quite real. But it does still give us a footprint overall that residential wood combustion is a big contributor to our, our emissions in the area. And this is on a worst day kind of a basis. And that permitted sources such as Collins Wood Products. This is their, their contributions if they're emitting at their maximum allowed levels on that same day. It's kind of a worst day look at, at emissions. Now ideally, we'd build and then size up each year, like twenty nineteen with, with this, this, the twenty seventeen inventory. Every three years, that national emission inventory is updated and produced across country. So our last year we have available to us is twenty seventeen. Twenty twenty would be the next year. It might be available in a year, maybe it's a little longer than that. But ideally, we'd be able to then measure back and really do an on the ground check. Do we think we're reducing residential wood combustion emissions through some of our wood stuff change outs we have going on? You know, how do we size up with this number? Are we, you know, reducing it or is it getting worse or, or what? As a way to just kind of gauge how we're doing overall as a community. It's just pictorially the same, that information again.
So real quick, going back to the previous slide, Peter, the the permitted emissions, basically in that chart that we were looking at. basically in that chart that we were looking at, is that based on what there, what is actually permitted? Or, you know, I think it's actually one before this. Well, I suppose it's on this as well. But, and residential wood combustion, is that just where it was at? Because when you say permitted sources, I mean, it sounds like there's an allowance.
Yeah, for the permitted sources, those are the sources that have permits with, with Department of Environmental Quality, so having their quality permit. And at their, at the maximum that they possibly could, not that they actually would on any given day, but this just assumes that it's kind of a worst-case look at that maximum level of emissions.
Okay, so that's.
So that is allowable emissions, yes.
Okay, so that's not necessarily what they are emitting, that's, that's worst-case, basically.
Yeah, usually it's a bit less or a lot less than that.
Okay.
And, and not every, cornerstone isn't doing its maximum at the same time that Collins is at the same time, you know, anybody else is. And the aggregate plant is grinding rock at the same time. That just doesn't really happen, but it's so, regulatorily, you have to account for it as if it could happen.
Got it.
And, and yeah, the emissions are different for the permitted sources like from a Collins, from the boiler. Those are a lot hotter emissions coming out of the stack than, than the wood stove, and they tend to come out with more buoyancy, the thermal, the heat buoyancy and velocity. And they tend to go up in the air higher and disperse better than, say, a wood stove emission point, which tends to just kind of come, roll out of the stack.
Right.
And, and it impacts our breathing zone a lot, lot faster. Okay?
Thank you.
Let's see, we do have our wood stove curtail program. We haven't been challenged by too many poor air quality days this year. Or last year, we didn't have any, what we call red days down here. We had only three yellow days. It's a phenomenal year, meteorologically for us, which helped keep numbers down, but we just had more air movement, which is nice, because then people were able to burn more too, to heat their homes if they chose to, which is just fine. But we do have our mandatory wood stove curtail program within the town. They're, we're working towards, I can't say we've eliminated all the sole source wood heat exemptions. It would push comes to shit out, you know, somebody if that's really their sole source and they've got a few fairly dilapidated baseboard heaters, you aren't going to beat them up too much for, for burning on a red day, you just want them to burn as clean as possible. So you try to work with people, but we haven't really had any non-compliers last year or this year. We did, we've done pretty well overall. Let's see. Yeah, so this year, so far, we're doing a bit better. I think we've had a few more yellow days. I can't remember if we've had a red day or not. We have had a number of red days around South Central and Eastern Oregon, but not, not too many so far. But yet, we've had a few of those air stagnation events that just weren't, they call them air stagnation light, they weren't a heavy air stagnation that really trapped the air in our little local breathing zone and didn't move it for days and was that cold. So we were pretty lucky with this stagnation events we've had so far. But yeah, we keep working on, on getting information out to people when they can burn, when they can't. We're a little flux this year, a little slight change of personnel and how that's working out at the town. See, we, we didn't have a big funding source this year for changing out wood stoves or or weatherization. I'd love to do more weatherization program or, or projects. But we did get this last year seventy-five thousand dollars from the Oregon Legislature to do wood stove changeouts and, and other projects that can help reduce emissions from wood, such as having drier wood to burn in the first place. So we did, we have slated to change out about nine wood stoves. A number of them will be for a heat pump, so actually getting rid of the wood stove. Others are, should just replace an old, really old, usually they're thirty, forty-year-old wood stove. But we have nine of those in progress right now. I think the last one will be completed first week of January, it's scheduled for when everything lines up, the labor and the equipment to arrive. We're pretty excited about that. And we also built fourteen small, little, very simple, very pretty inexpensive wood, wood storage sheds, pulled about one cord. We were able to build, build them and then get them distributed in the community this year. Now, would I like to know? I don't know yet. I haven't actually seen them, I haven't been able to travel, unfortunately, so I haven't been down to Lake County or Lakeview in, gosh, almost a year, it's killing me. But I'd like to. Also, it is, it, I, I, you realize you miss traveling through wonderful Eastern Oregon, you know, and seeing the beautiful scenery and wildlife and meeting with, you know, wonderful people and helping solve problems. But, because heaven help do that. So anyway, yeah, I haven't seen the wood, the wood sheds actually installed in yards or the homes, but I suppose we had fourteen out there installed and in place. And what we're working for is to find out from people later on, did they like them? They like using them? Do they help keep their wood dry? Things like that. It's just encourage having drier wood to burn. Wet wood will smolder, will smoke more, produce more emissions. So this is all in a effort to get people to burn cleaner, drier, better practices while they're burning, so we produce less smoke even then, if not when we have money available, change somebody out completely from wood stove or give them a heating alternative to that wood stove, such as a heat pump. Let's see, we also had some tarts that we're handing out to people. We know they could be used for other things, maybe they cover something else, but at the time, people proposed to use it to cover their wood, and that's fine. Yeah, we'll, we just go with it and move on and, and have drier wood to burn. So this is one highlight this year that was pretty nice. Instead of having South Central Economic Development Districts go ahead, like do the project changeout, we're working on doing it ourselves. There's a little trick here to get that rolling and to get it smooth and to have the project So we learned a lot, I think, in how to have a wood stove changeout program, how to make it happen, but it'll enable us to do it, more of these in the future. Hopefully there will be some future funding. But we also did a survey, I shouldn't overlook that. We did a, oh, not, not a highly technical, but a wood heating survey we sent out to, gosh, it's fifteen hundred or, we sent out to about everybody in the community. We didn't have a high response rate, maybe ten percent or so, but it gave us an idea of, that there are a lot of still old wood stoves and wood inserts out in homes, and some of them are still being used as sole source wood heat and are not, they aren't in very good shape. So we did kind of identify a little pool of people who are old non-certified stoves or they have certified stoves, maybe other heat that they, that they use to heat their homes, you know, backup heat. For being really non-quantitative survey, it's really qualitative. It did help give us an idea of, of the smattering of wood stoves that are out there, kind of approximate numbers. We still have a lot to change out if, if we can. But we would have liked to have better response as well. Let's see. Do, do, public education awareness, we pretty much are doing the same thing we've done before. Hopefully, we've got, you know, I have been around to see it myself, just quite how it's going and setting flags up like out in front of town hall, having the reader board available. I think it only would really show when it's a, a yellow or a red day, it may not when it's a green day. But we should still have radio ads going out and put together a series of articles for the newspaper. So one more to publish. So we've been trying to number of different, different things and a lot of the same to get education awareness out in front of people on the program. But as part of this survey that we had sent out before, we were asking people, you know, are they aware of the green, yellow, red kind of wood stove advisor program? Most people said they, they were. So that was pretty comforting there too. And then just in talking with people, I gave a talk to the Sharptonist Group, which I think is last, just last February, that I tell you, COVID's made me almost skip a year in my memory at times, when I'm thinking two years ago, but I think maybe it just happened last year, but the whole year kind of just blurred and went by. I don't know if that's the same for you guys, but it's, it's kind of crazy. Anyway, I gave a talk to the Sharptonist and pretty much everybody there understood the program, what it's about, and that's really, really nice to hear, that people did pay attention. They, they paid attention to what's going on with air quality advisories. Is it a good day to burn or not, or is air quality poor? On a red day, then you're expecting your quality to be poor, then they pay attention to it, so that's kind of nice to see. If there's any wild idea, thoughts in how to get more education out in front of people, I'd appreciate hearing it. We're trying to make more inroads with the school. Holly Helms with the town is helping put together like a little poster drawing contest for air quality for, I think, maybe it's fifth graders, but to get details from her on just which grade. But we're, we're trying, we're trying to, a number of different areas, there's some pretty good publications by EPA and others on, like, for kids, books on air quality, water quality, or just general environment or science. There's some nice little books out there that we're trying to collect and either help, if they're available in the library already, get them available there and get them in front of kids to take a look at. We appreciate any ideas you may have, if we're time. Prescribed burning, we did up our agreement with the Forest Service on prescribed fire to essentially mind our advisories and not, not do burns when it would impact the town or especially on, on red days and avoid burning on yellow days. They've been really good to work with. We had agreement with Collins Pine, I'm not quite sure where that stands at the moment. I think it's, it's up for renewal very soon to work on that. Is it, is it still needed? I'm not sure the status of Collins Pine Timberlands around the area. They, they changed hands a bit, it seems. Okay, one thing in the future that we had talked about, I think, before, but we really haven't implemented, is joining the AlertSense program to be able to have text messages go out when it's a red day. We talked about joining it, I haven't really heard anything about it in some time, so I'm not sure where that program is, if it's still available for us to join, is something we do next year, we budget and plan for.
Yeah, I reached out to Daniel Teig after our last discussion, and last time I'd kind of heard about it, and so I, I asked him to kind of get me, what it would take for you guys to get on board with this, so if those, those notices could be sent out. And he was going to follow up with a few things and unfortunately, I haven't been able to circle back with him yet. So, but I did make him aware.
Yeah, we, I, I think before we had somebody with the health program was kind of on point to target that and to talk about it, maybe get us involved in it as an air quality committee, but in COVID kind of took out, took the wind out of those sails. So nobody, nobody from our committee was really pushing this, moving forward to ask questions, get, get, get together with Daniel and so forth. So hopefully in the future we can do that, but thank you. Yeah, and if you get, have any updates ever, or can push dialogue to happen, do let me know.
Right, I, I figured as soon as I, as soon as I can get something concrete, I forward that directly on you.
Is the program being used right now?
Yes.
Okay. It's, it's in existence, it's being used, so that's good to know.
We, we used it a lot during the fire, during the rapid fire, and we're setting up notices on that. I remember being in the PSL area and we'd get notices on evacuation levels and so forth. So it is, it is being utilized.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's, it's a big system, and so I think it was a little daunting, I think, at first, but they've got it up to money.
It'd be great if it's utilized more.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Needs to be used.
Yeah. We were talking about just using it on red days, because those are just, you know, it's, it's at the importance level. Just on red days, it wouldn't be used very much, hopefully, some years more than ever or more than others. But that's, that's really the only time we talked about it, being used at this point to help. Let's see, was there anything else in efforts? As I said, I'd like to, oh, get, get another air quality sensor or two in the area, while I'll take one, figure out where to put it. It'd be just nice to get a little bit better idea of air quality, and if it's on a different network, not on DEQs. It wouldn't necessarily be on DEQs if we had, say, one of these cheap, what they call purple air monitors. We got one of those, about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars or so. It's on the purple air network, but that gives people a different way to go see what's going on with air quality, say, if our monitor is down for the day. And was also very helpful during the wildfire attacks.
Hang on, Fisher Robertson has a question.
So if you put in more than one monitor, do you just average the, the particulates or?
No, we, we'd still use, just the official.
Another resolo, what is going to be our outcome?
Yeah, we'd still just use the official BEQ monitor, like another monitor that's a cheaper, what we call low-cost sensor. Those aren't quality-controlled or quality-assured, calibrated at all to the same degree that the state's monitor is. So it is still a monitor at Center and M would be the official one, but at least it'd give us an idea on trending, on what's going on with, with smoke in particular in other areas.
So, so being the devil's advocate, if it, if those monitors showed extreme, it would be held against us?
Correct.
Okay.
And such as for these purple air monitors, there is actually a correction factor, a lot of people have done studies on them to help correct that, the data, the output that they show, to be more realistic. Because like right now, we're, we're at a nice green level for our quality, that monitor would show upper-yellow, for example. It can exaggerate the output. Humidity impacts it. A number of different things can impact that monitor and its output. And that's where ours are all calibrated and controlled in that way. But no, it wouldn't be held against us, but we'd use it as information, just what's going on. Do we see many, many differences between your one place or the other in town? Or in the UGB? And maybe there's a different issue somewhere else that we need to target. But a lot of it does just give people other information. During the wildfires, it's very helpful for people to pull up their purple air map and just see all of the state. But there's, you know, there's a purple air monitor in Christmas Valley or at the rather Northlake School, for example. So you can see what's going on there. There's one out by Burns. There's not enough of them out, out in, in central, south central or eastern Oregon. I'd like to see a few more, just so you get a better idea what's going on in various locations in our communities. Like having, having one up in Christmas Valley would be kind of nice. Just lets people know what's going on there in their community. Okay, otherwise, yeah, for a summary. Yeah, we're, right now we are over the standard. But yet we're doing really well last two years and this year should be another good year back in a wildfire smoke. And we, we very much hope next couple of weeks, we can eat by and have that good year. So that next year would be more like on the 28, 29, 30 or something for our three year average, well below the standard. I anticipate over another, another 10 years or so that their quality standard will likely be reduced. A lot of health data says that fine particulate matter impacts our, our, our health, our bodies and our, our health, our lungs, our pulmonary system at much lower levels than even that current standard. But that's why we keep targeting that, can we get down to like 28, 29 micrograms or lower for our highest levels that count against us or that three year average? So we just kind of target those lower areas. So they change the standard and we're still fine. That's, that's kind of our plan there and to deliver cleaner air quality for our residents. But yeah, we'll continue moving forward where we are. We continue to get a $15,000 a year grant from, from DEQ to help fund the program. Help pay for personnel and some expenses like radio ads, things like that. And that, that should continue on, at least in the foreseeable future. Unless we have very severe budget cuts, but it's not likely at this point. Let's see, anything else?
I have no other questions, Mark or James? No?
None for me. And just in general, we do look for, I know it was Mark talking.
Oh, that was me. Go ahead, Peter. That was Brad.
Okay. Yeah, and we bring this to present it, to let you know what's going on. And in a way, we're looking also for your blessing to move forward, keep doing what we're doing. Or if there's any suggestions, always welcome to send emails out to whether it's me or anybody on the committee. Darwin's on our committee, very, very helpful member there. But yeah, pass on those ideas or any comments you have. We'll keep moving forward on this and hopefully, hopefully we aren't doing anything wrong, put it that way. I can say.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you very much.
Appreciate it, Peter. Thank you for taking the time and going through all that today.
Yeah, hopefully next year we'll be back on our normal schedule. We'll do this in like October.
Alrighty.
In person.
Yeah.
That's much better.
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep working in that direction.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate the commission's time.
You bet.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Peter.
All right. Wanted to come back to, you want to come back to the discussion on the solar committee?
He had liaison date as well, I had, and it kind of segues into that if, if we can do that this time.
I've been out of coffee for an hour.
Would you like to take two or three minutes?
I would, I would. I'd like to take a couple of minutes.
I would like to take a minute too.
Take a break and shut off the recorder, didn't we? So the recorder, we're back in the session at 10 minutes to 11. Are you on the? Are you there, Melanie?
Yep.
Oh, I see you there. You're a little busy right now. Commissioner Albertson, are you still on the phone?
I am.
Hey.
Thanks for recognizing me.
Yeah, good to not see you. It's hot fired. Okay, all right. So we're, we've got 10 minutes before 11 o'clock time.
Yes, and I don't know how long that's going to take. We, we can, we can always drop this and come back.
Come back to the house.
Yes, I have the assessor here and I believe Ann is joining us. I wanted to kind of give you guys an update real briefly. And again, if we want to have further conversation, mull some of these things over. We can come back after our 11 o'clock and discover more. But I've been, I've been working on the CRIA board and with some other commissioners around the state on some of this solar stuff. There's a lot of discussion going on. And they came to us a couple of weeks ago and they wanted to reduce the rate for the pilot that Lake County currently utilizes for some of the solar projects from the 7,000 per megawatt to 3,500 per megawatt with incremental step downs of 5% per year. And now that was definitely met with some hesitation. It was only coming from one developer, I should say. The other developer wanted to stick with something closer to 5,000, 5,500 per megawatt, so about 5,500. And they went around, we went around a little bit and eventually CRIA kind of came to. We, we're, we're still struggling through this as far as making a decision. At AOC, there was a lot of discussion yesterday, even after CRIA decided that the 5,500 was appropriate. Batteries not included. And they have it a flat 5,500, no ceiling, no, no floor, just flat 5,500. No negotiation at 15 years, not 10 to 20, but 15. And so, and that was one of the other negotiation points during the whole period. I have been really hesitant on it. We've gone back and forth with Commissioner Russell in Morro County, Commissioner, sorry, Judge Reynolds in Harney County, Commissioner DeGrutin, climate, and these are all the guys that were at the table. And I think everyone identifies the fact that Lake County has the most solar. And we are looking at the most amount of large scale solar projects. And I, I've argued the points. I imagine everyone's got a lot of thoughts on this as well. But like I said, I wasn't comfortable with accepting any kind of proposal of 5,500 being that they already have legislation prepared with representative power to carry before the legislature on this very subject. And then they came to us. Now, I heard from the lobbyists working with AOC and Mallory at AOC that the, being that we were so hesitant to accept the 5,500, the lobbyists for some of the developers apparently came back and said that they were frustrated that we weren't willing to negotiate. And that we were somehow stepping away from the table and weren't willing to discuss anything. And as I pointed out, you guys only have this, we've only had one meeting. And everything else has just been an email chain between the commissioners. And we're all very hesitant to accept this $1,500 reduction in the rate.
So the acronym CRIA and AOC Subcommittee or AOC Financial.
It's an actual, it's an actual organization, Association for Energy, basically. It's a renewable, a committee on renewable energy, I believe is what the acronym stands for, something along those lines. I've attended the meetings in the past and sometimes they have them on the same day as AOC day. So it's, you can capture some of the commissioners at AOC that, that would go to Salem for their duty. But I, this is where the conversation was kind of coming out. They have their own director in that association. And they specifically focus on the purchase power agreements and different things and working with solar and renewable energy. The solar companies are making the argument that their, that the rate that they are getting for, in their purchase power agreements is not what it used to be. Say if it was 12 cents per kilowatt, it's now at like five or six or whatever. Actually, I think it's actually only about 20 to 25% reduction. So they're looking at reducing the rate in which they're taxed, about 20, 25% to keep the incentive. Because they say there's no longer much of an incentive to do the pilot. So they want to keep that incentive there. Now, I've made lots of arguments and AOC has dragged me kicking and screaming pretty much the whole way. And, and I said I was uncomfortable to accept any kind of agreement without discussing this with my board because it wasn't right for me to say that Lake County was comfortable with this. When I was, I was discussing with Ann and Darwin and I'd looped in Dave and some emails just said he kind of knew this conversation was taking place because you guys have all been part of this long before I came along as commissioner. So we're, I, I'm, I'm still not comfortable with the 5,500.
So, so first I gotta be surpassed.
Go for it.
Come January, my rates are going to be a lot less coming to me, so I want my taxes. All right.
So, well, I, I said that. I said, you know, I sit on the Board of Property Tax Appeals. If a ranch or a landowner came to me and said, my ranch isn't making as much anymore because heck, cattle prices are in the toilet, that would never happen. And I'm not able to make as much in my business structure anymore, so I'd like to reduce my taxes to something more fair and reduce it by half. Well, that's an argument that would be thrown out of any BOPA hearing.
I knew I probably did go a little bit.
So, no, I, I hear you. It's, it's.
So, um.
I get it.
Thanks for sitting and being not, or being a part of the CRIA discussions. The challenges are, is that it sounds like they're wanting support from CRIA to push their legislative agenda. It is not CRIA's decision, it's the legislative decision.
Correct. And it's coming from the developers.
And, and so the developers are pushing for this to have legislation pushed through and the more support they can get to reduce that, i.e. CRIA or AOC or counties, the more likely it's going to go through legis, legislatively. For me, I, I try to look at the loss sets of what the benefits are, non-benefits of the solar site. There are short term jobs that are great, but there's not long term jobs associated with it. So we don't get the number of employees or anything out of it. We're in a county that's only 22% pays the property tax every since publicly owned. Now that 22%, a lot of this farm deferred. So we've been very happy to get $7,000 per megawatt. And to knock that down, I, I just, it's hard for me to, to swallow.
Yeah.
We've been supportive and direct at the same time with the developers when they come in. But, you know. I, I guess one of the examples I've used over the years is some of the long term companies that's paid taxes for years never get a tax break. Are not as much of a tax break maybe than be the case. So I, I struggle with it. I appreciate you bringing that.
Well, right, and then.
And I think you knew where I would be before you even brought it forward.
I felt pretty confident in knowing where my board was going to be on this subject. But again, I wanted to follow the procedure and make sure that I was following up with you guys and that you knew where I was coming from. There is more to this subject. And I know we're kind of coming into another timed item. But I really, I, I would really like to kind of talk about a little bit in terms of the pilot itself. Okay, maybe we don't want to do the pilot. Maybe we don't have to incentivize the pilot. They can do a SIP agreement. The thing about the pilot is that those. When, when, when we say things like the county's getting $7,000 per megawatt, that's not entirely true. And it's not because those.
Taxing districts.
Those are broken up and you even lose a good portion to school reallocation, uh, funds and different things like that. So those dollars get beaten up, honestly. But when all is said and done, the amount of money that we get off of a megawatt of solar per year based on the pilot agreement, even at the 7,000 per megawatt, doesn't cover the toilet paper we purchased here. So I'm just saying.
But it's better than not developing, I mean, not getting taxation. So there is a.
There is a shortage on toilet paper.
I inherited this. I came to office after this was all in place. But if you got to think about it, most, all of our solar projects have gone into unproductive farm ground. And I did this research on that. And it takes a 75 acre footprint to make a 10 make project. Typical taxation for a low production farm ground is $350 a year gross going into the coffer. That's spread out, so the county doesn't hardly get any money out of those farm grounds because of deferred taxation. So then when you take that same $350 acre parcel and you start generating $70,000 and saying, yes, the county doesn't get full 70, but all the taxing districts receive that and that helps our county. And this year, our taxation has just, has been huge. Out of our $13 million being generated, almost a million of it's being in solar this year.
Yeah.
And so that is a significant number and it's our rising star for our county. There was legislation a couple of years ago to drop the pilot to $4,500. But a pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes, but it's still a taxation and it still gets distributed. And it's still a very beneficial thing. And, and if the planning is done right on the, on the ground that it's used, it is truly the highest and best use for that piece of property. And that, and that goes through Darwin's department and, and, you know, long before we get there. So the pilots are very, very valuable to our county and very, very useful. And this, and to say, well, maybe we don't want to do a pilot seems odd to me. And now they're, they're talking about adjusting it. I'm at the other end of the horse. I'm on the distribution end of it, so I don't really get to make the decision on where this is all going.
Right.
But, you know, you talked about going to a $3,500 pilot. That would take 40, $450,000 out of Lake County's taxi income taxes if that was to occur. And a $5,500, what they're talking about now is a thousand dollars greater than what they were talking about two years ago. And, and they are correct, the cost to create and generate, as the costs have dropped considerably since they did. We had the first solar farm in 2008. And, and since then, the construction cost has just gone down and it's gone up quite a bit. And we still have a lot of growth on the table, the projects coming in. So the pilots do have their place and they're very, very helpful for our community. It's for you to have the minister how that's going to come out.
Right.
So, so a question on that, hey, we've had this discussion many times. Is if that was centrally assessed, what would be the.
So Ann and I just, Ann and I just drove, drove up that network. We have 12, we have 12 projects operating right now. And we have one 10 make that's out of pilot. And they chose to do that at the very beginning. They took a, a three year opt out with no taxes for the first three years and then they paid straight up. And their, so a pilot would be $70,000. And their pilot's been running between 73 and 74,000 for the last three years, for 18, 19 and 20. So they're actually paying just a little bit above pilot.
But they got to opt out for the first three years.
They, they opted out for the first three and.
So the red zone gives them.
Yeah, that was enterprise.
Yeah, the red zone was enterprise.
To one of your questions, there's no red, red zone in any, in any of our projects.
There is no red zone in any of our projects.
In any of our existing solar projects, no.
So, so what you're saying, after the three years, the taxation. Um, after the three years, the taxation is more than the $7,000 per megawatt.
They, that's, that particular project chose to go that direction, yes.
Except for their 72 and the others 70.
Yeah. So now they're requesting to drop their, their pilot down, so that would be.
Actually, this, that group's not in the request.
If, those existing ones, correct.
The existing ones would be in the request, basically, yeah.
Right.
Anything going, anything going forward. So, we, in my view, then, is if we reduce it, our support, reducing it down to 4,500 from 7,000. Then what that does is, uh, they're even getting bigger break than if we centrally assess.
I, I totally agree with it. So the, the deal was, the original plan was a 20-year lock-in. So the, they crossed the pass according to the projections at 12 years. So the first, the first 12 years, they, they get a tax break. And in the last eight years, they pay more in taxes. So.
Yeah, um.
One, can we?
One question I have too, David. After the pilot's over, you know, the life of these solar projects is still, you know, out there. So, so what happens with taxation as it's fully assessed or whatever remains on?
If, at that time, it's hard to project what the pilot program's gonna look like. They can either reenter a pilot or they can go on or simply assess. We've had one site that's gone completely out. And after they removed all their improvement, it went back to farm ground. So it went back to a few low-cost tax. We have had that happen once.
Sheriff, sheriff, are we waiting, waiting for some other people to show up or they?
I think they're just in the hallway then.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so, uh, we're gonna come back to the solar discussion. We have 11 o'clock, please, as we come in. Uh, so, yeah, so as soon as people come in, uh, sheriff, I'd like to turn this over to, uh, Sheriff Taylor.
Craig, come on up here. Amy, if you would like, come on up and stand next to your friend. Um, I think everybody was in here, uh, when Craig was, uh, presented with his award from the sheriff's office for, um, meritorious action. We put him in for, uh, an award with the Oregon State Sheriff's Association. And it was accepted and it was sent to us. Usually these awards from the, uh, Oregon State Sheriff's Association are presented at the banquet at the, at the sheriff's conference. Because of COVID, that they were unable to do that. So, they sent it to us and we're gonna present it here. I'm not gonna go through, uh, everything that I went through last time, basically. Uh, Craig responded to a call of the individual shooting at the Interstate 8 motel on September 12th, 2020. Uh, he arrived and when he arrived, uh, the person that was in the motel that was shooting up the room entered or exited the motel room. Pointing the gun at Deputy Kinsley. Deputy Kinsley responded and, and, uh, discharged a round, striking the suspect in the chest. Subsequently, uh, the suspect died due to the gunshot. We had a criminal investigation which was conducted by the Oregon State Police. We had internal investigation that was conducted by our office. And Craig went through a use-of-force deadly review board and, uh. Uh, multiple interviews with the, uh, law enforcement agencies. Craig was clear to be any wrongdoing. It was determined he was within the scope of his authority as a police officer and his actions in that, uh, use-of-force situation were justified. Not only was he justified in his actions, but Craig displayed exemplary, uh, conduct, uh, restraint. And, uh, honorable conduct at that time. So, we don't want to recognize Craig for taking a life. That is always a, a devastating process and anytime, uh, a deputy or any kind of law enforcement officer has to do that. But we are recognizing him for his conduct. And, uh, the way he conducted business that day. That's always a law enforcement officer's worst nightmare is to be engaged in a situation like that. And Craig acted, uh, very responsibly and professionally, so. Not only is Craig recognized for his, uh, conduct and his professionalism. But. When we go through something like that, a, a lot of the grief and, and the aftermath falls on the shoulders of our families. Our spouses have to deal with it, our children have to deal with it. And they offer the support and what we need, give us a solid foundation and. And are there with us throughout the process, so that's why I have Amy here too. I mean, I'm sure she's heard from the time this happened till, uh, today. I mean, it's a long process that we gotta go through to, to deal with it and they've done it, um, fondly, so. With that being said, um, Craig, this is just a, a plaque by the sheriff's office. That's, uh, kind of a synopsis of what, uh, he went through that day. And this is an award by the Oregon State Sheriff's Association. Oregon State Sheriff's Association Distinguished Action Award, presented to Deputy Craig Kinsley, Lake County Sheriff's Office. And it says, Sheriff Terry Rowan, who is the Oregon State Sheriff's Association President for 2020. So there you go, congratulations.
If you'd like to say so. Okay.
Can I, can I get a?
Thank you, Sheriff.
Sorry to make you do that again. You wanna look, you don't have a look, you're one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
How you feeling?
I'm doing okay, doing okay.
How's your wife?
Sheriff, thank you. Yeah, you bet. Looks of the pictures, she's better after she's been told. It's been sort of a trying, trying.
We.
Alright. Alright. Alright, let's move on to, come back to solar and taxation.
I, you know, trying to work through a lot of this and I'm really grateful for, I think, Dave. Every time I need him, I can walk over and harass him and ask questions and before he throws me out of his office, makes me have work to do. And, uh, and, and Anne and Darwin, you guys have always been available. I'm trying to work through a lot of this and I felt uncomfortable, um, in the CRIA meetings. As I've seen some of the other commissioners step away from the argument just because they don't want to take off the developers. It was, it wa- it was an argument made by one commissioner that. If we didn't accept some sort of reduction, the question as to whether or not we were willing to incentivize solar would be in question. And my response to that was, that's ridiculous. Lake County has been doing solar since before the state was writing rules on it. And before this, before anyone was doing solar. Um, large scale, we've always incentivized solar. The question that is being asked of us in reference to this subject is, has nothing to do with incentivizing solar. Has to do with incentivizing the developers. So, that's, and that is a legislative issue. That for, for me and, and for us as commissioners to be brought into the table just so that, you know, they can go and show pie in. From the counties when they go and present their legislation, which they've had written long before they brought anything to us for discussion. Um, was a little frustrating for me. So. When I make the comment, you know, like, maybe we don't want to do a pilot. Part of that comes out of the, the fact that I'm, I'm looking at, you know, even with the three-years deferment. Which I wasn't entirely sure whether or not that had had a three-year deferment. I wasn't even sure if that had been a red zone. That was some discussion I think Darwin and I had had. We weren't sure if that was enterprise zone or what. But it was definitely at a different rate and it was higher than those that were in the pilot program. And Alback Solar's been around for quite a while. So, even with the rate reduction and the reevaluate, reevaluation. I was seriously wondering if maybe it would be better for us in the long run to take that rather than a $1,500 reduction overall. Um, especially with the 15-year, um, you know, lock-in as well. And other commissioners are pushing around, maybe we just want it as a, as a floor. That's what we're talking about right now is like just have it a floor. I think one solar company wanted it as a ceiling so they can negotiate less than the 5,500 at least and go back down hopefully to maybe their 3,500. But we said, how about a floor and then we'll have a ceiling at 7,000. And then we negotiate based on years and everything else and how long we have that in place. But it leaves it up to the county and gives us some, but, well, I don't.
So, so all of the incentives, whether it's the 15-year community service fee like Red Rock has. Or it's the red zone or whatever we set out or whatever, whatever is to attract development to your counties. And so, the real question is, um, is how much do you want to buy solar for this county? And if you want to get that development here, you incentivize it. And that's by supporting the pilot program or, or reduction pilot program and different things like that. And that's a really, don't want you to answer that because you can't win on that. So what you want is opportunity for development to come here that, that when they do develop here, they become a community partner. And they're, they're paying their fair share. For our constituents that we hear from regularly on all this is, uh, they, they continue to be upset with incentives. And so, as we was told years ago, three years ago, $7,000, we need to support that. That's, that's a good thing, good thing for all of us. And then we're here six years later, seven years later, 10 years, whatever it is. And, oh, we need more money in our pockets, is the way that it sounds and the way it is. So, I'm just talking.
Can you make a comment?
Sure, go ahead.
So, we have a commodity, we have the ground. What I don't like is some, someone, whether it be the state or a developer. Telling us, you're going to take this amount of money for your commodity, whether you like it or not. It's just like, if I had something to sell. Even if, even if I didn't necessarily want to sell it, they're gonna buy it for this and we don't have no say over it. And that's what I don't like about the whole thing.
So, it's interesting because we do incentivize solar and, and we want to incentivize solar. I mean, we've already shown that we've been able to offset our carbon emissions, both abiotic and biotic. One of the only counties in the state to have done that. It's put us in a very good bargaining situation with the state to be able to argue that this can be done without mandates, but can be done economically. It's allowed us to make very good arguments that not very many other people are in a position to make. We also incentivize agriculture because agriculture is our backbone, our, our county. We don't have a lot of it. Yes, we have 8,000 square miles, but 87% of that is in government ownership. Or 78, 78.
76.
76, okay, right.
I wondered what you thought of.
78, 76, I was trying to, 76.
And 24.
And 24. So 20, so you have to take that public lands completely off the slate. So 24 is pretty much all that you have left to work with. We, we want to protect that asset, like to make, to your point, Commissioner Albertson. Is that that is, that is an asset that we hold in Lake County and we're charged with, you know, protecting. So, because we incentivize that as well, that's why I use the example on the BOPDA board. If I have a rented company and wants to reduce his taxes because his business structure isn't making money anymore. I technically, I can't do that. I can't just forgive his taxes and like let them all go simply because it wasn't penciling out for him. So, um, we can't incentivize that, but we can incentivize the large-scale solar projects. And, 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 and I, I admit that I was put on the wrong foot on this subject when 3,500 was thrown out there. But it was also thrown out there with a caveat that unless we took one of these deals. That they would be forced to go and take solar production to Idaho and Montana. Which my response to that, if you want to build solar where it snows 48 inches a year, you're perfectly welcome to go and do that. Because honestly, I felt like they were playing hardball with this at that point. And, and if you wanted, and I mean, there's less than 2 million people in Idaho. There's over 4 million in Oregon. This is where you're trying to get your power infrastructure. And you have to make sure that your line capacity from Idaho and Montana will actually carry the utility where it needs to go.
The, the Oregon, it has to get to California.
Right. We're right between California and Washington. And, and Eastern Oregon was the answer to a lot of people's issues and problems because we had lots of sunlight, we had lots of land, we were willing to try and work with them. But now, the value, even though they say that renewable energy is the future, this is where we need to go. They're looking at huge-scale projects and more and more. But at the same time, they tell us that what we have isn't worth what it used to be. And I understand that maybe the purchase power agreements come into play in this because you're dealing with a public utility. That, and no one wants to get a big giant power bill every time they switch on the heater in their house because, you know, because it's cold. Uh, so those rates are kept low and because of that, the purchase power agreements are low. And what they're making dollars back, the, the solar companies, isn't what it used to be. So, got it. They're losing the incentive. It's not as attractive as it used to be. Maybe power does need to go up in dollars.
We've had a different administration for four years and the incentives have dropped like crazy compared to what they were in 2008 when we had a different president. So there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of balls in the air. At the end of the day, it's a negotiation, they're doing business. They came to us with a $7,000 number knowing that that was gonna be a tax relief at that point in time. Okay, now that they've got these costs down and their income streams down, they're asking for some adjustment. And that's where you guys need to make your decision on what you want to do. We have a sister county right next to us, Harney County, but they dug their heels in and said, we're not gonna do the pilot. We're not gonna bend over and give you this thing. You're not gonna dictate to us what we want. And they said, no pilots. Well, guess what? Harney County just, we've had solar since, hey. Harney County got their first up-and-going solar project in 19. So they had no generation for those many years. That's how many years behind they are, just because they didn't want to engage in that process. So there's, it's a give-and-take kind of a deal. And so I applaud the commissioners' choices in the past to do where we're at, to get where we are today. So now we're at another threshold, we gotta make a decision on which way to step and that's, that's in your hands.
I agree. And that's, that's why I wanted to bring it to the board for discussion because it's an important matter and, and, uh. And, no, I was talking with Commissioner Russell, this is actually kind of interesting. Commissioner, uh, Russell, Don Russell in Morro County, they don't have any solar in Morro County. So when he was being asked on where, what his position was on it, he actually put it off on Lake County. Because they don't have solar and felt it wasn't fair of him to really just speak on this too much. But we had some discussion on some of the solar, on the, uh, renewable energy sites that they do have and granted, it's most likely wind. But at the low end in their county right now, I think they were looking at about $13.50 per thousand. That's at the going rate of 7,000 per megawatt, the site that's on there right now is already looking at a 48% discount. With it at the 7,000 per megawatt. So.
You see, the, it gets kind of, it's kind of weird because the DOR essentially assesses the one that's coming up with those assessment values.
Granted.
And just like we've seen with Ruby Pipeline. They didn't want to deal with the devil. They would rather deal with the devil they know than the devil they don't know. And with these flat numbers, they can project that what their costs are gonna be. And what we've experienced is a VOR in their assessment process and their big-picture deal sometimes is a little scary. And that's why they like these fixed numbers and being countered like that. And so, and that's part of the reason why these projects are selling or have sold in the past. So.
But it penciled out a 7,000.
Yeah.
I don't know.
With different costs of construction and different purchase power agreements.
Right.
Though they're both have changed since. Those are both have changed since they pushed that through.
Let's see.
But also what has changed is the cost of the solar panels and all that and that hasn't come back in. The cost of the solar panel today compared to whenever they could pay the pilot at seven thousand.
Oh, they're cheaper now.
So it's cheaper, so.
But when you're looking at a Department of Revenue assessment on the construction build out.
And the value.
And the value, so their value is less too. To get taxed on.
But the construction costs are less too.
Right, when the per, all of it is, that's what I'm saying.
It's all got.
The DOR's assessment, if the DOR is gonna fully tax them, essentially assess them, they're gonna be assessing it at a much lower value.
Right, but then I keep coming back and maybe this is my stupid brain, the way it's functioning. I'm just thinking, looking forward into the future, I don't see power as being a commodity that is cheap. And and so we put ourselves out there and we lock ourselves into this low line and we we give away our land and everything else to be put into the use for this. Because if you start pulling dams and everything else, power needs are going up, not down. I mean, there's a huge argument right now going out to state capital, they can't even hold remote sessions because their their internet capacity. Isn't even high enough at the state capital in downtown Salem to meet the needs for the meetings and hearings that they have to have, and that's just on broadband. Energy, power, all those other things are going up. I mean, I I remember the comment from a guy who built computers saying you'll never need more than a megabyte. And that was from Bill Gates himself and look where we come in. That guy is still around to this day. Power needs are going up, not in reverse. So the need is going up, the requirements and everything else, okay, the cost is going down and I understand how DOR plays and factors into this. But I just feel like we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot and giving things away that. I I, it's being told to us that the sky is falling and so we have to reduce the rate. Because, you know, it's no longer profitable, we'll have to go to Idaho, Montana or wherever else. But I'm, I'm, I'm.
No, actually, what would really truly happen is these solar companies would really start looking at the assessed rates of each county. And Lake County would actually be positioned really well because we have one of the lower assessed values.
Correct.
In the state. So I think then you, then you have a different competition going on.
They can't build these things in western Oregon.
Well, yeah, they're not going to build them.
You can't build large scale solar in western Oregon.
They're not going to build them, right.
Right, even the argument about your.
But then you have an issue with DOR and their essentially assessment of it. And investors not trusting how they're going to assess it. So.
Right. Right, so this is the, this is the discussion. I'm, I'm bringing it to you guys and I, and I, I'm throwing a lot out there because I want you guys to be aware of the situation.
I.
We're, we're.
The thing is, it's not in our hands, it's not at all.
Well.
This decision's gonna be, it is not made at our.
No, it will be made at a legislative level, but.
But it's, but it's influenced by commissioners and commissioners supportive and that's where it's going.
Right, and a lot of those commissioners are looking to us and that's what I'm saying.
And 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 then to try and give a legislation change, which falls into our realm as far as politicians and the committees we sit on. Um, so it does. You gotta remember, us, Lake County, we have our own solar project ourselves, three hundred and twenty years.
Yeah.
We're no less than that, out of Derekport. You know what they pay just for the lease of the land per year? They they don't pay those kinds of leases and stuff because they don't make money. And so that one was penciled out. To make money for twenty years at the rate they've done.
Three hundred and thirty five thousand.
Yeah.
Plus the.
Plus the lease payment.
Plus the lease payment, so it doesn't sound like something that's not making money.
The cost to wheel. And wheeling means transmitting the power from Lake County to the marketplace.
Right.
For a typical ten meg site is about a hundred thousand dollars a year. So then they can't distinguish the power once it goes in the line, it gets mixed with hydropower or anything else.
Right.
But they can certify they're making an organic product in Lake County and they can sell certified organic product in Portland. And the cost of that power wheel typically runs about a hundred K for a ten meg site annually. So you're looking at all these other costs and you're looking at these taxes and so on like that. They have that cost also.
Yes.
Just to throw another number at it.
But I completely agree, Lake County doesn't have to go on record supporting a reduction in the.
Yeah.
We don't have to.
And I appreciate you saying that because that's kind of, that's kind of where we were in our discussion, maybe we just don't support it and and I haven't.
Yeah.
We did support NAOC, we supported allowing the pilot to continue. But because AOC couldn't come to an agreement, even though Korea had, AOC, the committee that it came through on transportation. I thought it was interesting that it came through on transportation, but they, they couldn't come to an agreement and even the legislative committee couldn't later. Legislative committee, which I also sit on, we, we voted to approve the continuation of the pilot program because it sunsets next year. And so we want to.
You have to do something, yeah.
Right, you have to do something.
Yeah.
I, I, uh, I may be mistaken, it's twenty twenty two, it's sunsets, but we have to do something in twenty twenty one. Um, for the next session. But if if we continue the pilot program, I like the pilot program, I want it to continue, it's just the rate reduction. I'm not sure if I want to get behind it on on that front and and in many ways, I'm not trying to block it. I'm, I don't, I can't promise that I won't go see Representative Power at some point and express Lake County's position. But go ahead.
So, well. I I tell you, just because we deal with so much as commissioners. The other side of this is we're starting to see proposed large scale, I mean, huge scale.
Thousands of acres.
Within our county. Um, and and. Our want for dollars, we got to be cautious.
Mm hmm.
Of our want for dollars and we, we continue. Starting more and more appeals coming to the Board of Commissioners, more and more attention to Lake County. Not all positive attention. From special interest groups and different things, that all plays plays in as far as I'm concerned. It doesn't sound like it does, but we sit here as commissioners and here to build, it's going to go on up to loop and everything. Uh, our constituents aren't warm and fuzzy for the most part for Lake County to be covered in salt. And so I I take that into some consideration myself whenever you're, they want you to say, okay, we're gonna reduce it by fifteen hundred dollars. Lake County's a great solar place, they don't live here every day and. We see the phone calls in my world, death threats even, I mean, it it all plays in together. Whenever you're trying to represent your county for the financial, getting the tract development and then try to support your constituents and everybody out there. As far as, um, there are, there are the polls of it.
Right.
There's a lot more to it, to just.
And the point you make about, you know, we we take some bumps and bruises and some, we take some good right swings on the chin sometimes. For things that are outside of our purview and control, for things that are going through EFSEC process or whatever. And we take some pretty good sized blows that are considerable. So like I pointed out on the call, thirty five hundred dollars a megawatt isn't worth it. Especially if most of that's just going to be getting eaten up by all the different districts, they're not necessarily all discretionary for us to go get a new deputy. They're not discretionary for us to balance our budget necessarily, very small portion of it is, especially if you go through the pilot. This is something that actually Commissioner DeGroot argued, uh, from climate county that maybe we go more with the SIP. Where some of those dollars are more discretionary. But that comes with its own issues because they're discretionary. Because we get to have to say in a lot of the places where those dollars are spent, a lot of things are expected of us. As to where those dollars are going to go and everyone has a different.
You're obviously saying there's a lot of hands held out.
There's a lot of hands held out as to where those dollars should go when it's a SIP. And and Commissioner DeGroot felt that that was something he could manage. I was less sanguine on the matter because, um, it's, and and so I actually. I, although I support where Commissioner DeGroot was coming from in terms of, okay, you're gonna say these are all dollars going to the county, they're not. How about you make it more where it's like the SIP where they are discretionary and we could actually use these things for things that I really need to, need to do. But for us, it's always been.
The the pilot at seven thousand dollars per megawatt distributed by our tax formally is what it is.
Right, absolutely.
All all property taxes and so I'm supportive of that because of our taxing districts, especially some of the very small communities.
Our library, everything, all of them.
So that that part of it, but you make a good point, people see the number is the taxation to this amount, they have tendency think that's.
That's the commissioners, then we're going to just put that into our budget so we can do whatever we want.
Yeah, and so that that there, I think you make a good point. I, I have a hard time with Korea wanting to support legislation to reduce that much of stuff, I really do. There's, there's one thing in private businesses is, um, you know, you have to be profitable. But you shouldn't, you shouldn't have to pay your way the same as the person setting the sites.
Right, and maybe there's other, maybe, maybe you're not running your business right, I don't know, maybe. If you're, you're putting too much money going out, you need to wring that in, maybe you've got whatever, but.
Well, we talked about that too, like how co-ops right now have the ability to pay their taxes based on gross revenue or on their ad valorem. Property values, like we already have a law in place that allows electric co-ops. A choice, which must be an incentive to them, obviously, they're gonna pay the lesser of those two amounts. So sometimes I wish solar could have followed some existing state law. So that they do have some ability to incentivize that. But it's, it's not using these kinds of values and numbers that are kind of unknown to all of us. It's like, what's the magic number, like no one knows.
Right, and then you say.
And so it's hard to make these decisions. Um, I'm a, I'm a numbers girl, I wanted to see the numbers, but when we're talking about DOR, we don't know what the number is. We, we can't, we can't choose. So I wish, I wish that a long time ago, they would have used existing state law and tried to use that model. It would have been beneficial.
Well, they have a choice between going with pilot or without pilot, they go centrally assessed or without, and that's what they have right now.
But essentially assessed is a mystery.
And it has been for all.
Yeah.
Well, it's. But but it's much higher, it was much higher.
The problem with centrally assessed is the state is broke. The department that operates it doesn't generate money for the state and it hasn't been a priority in our administration. And they reduced staff by almost forty percent. So now they have fewer people trying to manage these big accounts and things are getting dropped. And small fish are not getting picked up and some of the decision processes I don't agree with, but I don't have, we don't have an option of.
You're just enjoying this so much.
No, no, I, I, what, I, I don't know how far I want to go because. One of my frustrations was way back when, whenever I found out that these private companies get the same rights to go down our road right of ways. We can't charge them a cost or for them to use our right of ways, they get the same as a utility. And they can put it right down our right of way. And we expend time and everything to make that happen, not a lot, but a certain amount. But we can't charge them.
Yeah.
For that easement or anything, they just qualify. It seems like that they just continue them on everything for them.
Well, you know, even when they, even they damaged the road, I've made that argument that a lot of the dollars that we take in to the general fund. Aren't dollars that we can just transfer over to the road department for their costs. And repairing those roads when they start dilapidating down, down the road, no pun intended.
But but we sort of captured that on the condition you said.
Well, right, and we were looking at.
Yeah, I get that's the beginning, and once, once the sites constructed, the, the roads are not affected anymore.
Well, yeah, uh, right, except, you know, whatever, if you have a large infrastructure of roads that are built with cold mix. Or they just weren't built to take on the heavy loads that were coming in from all that construction, that goes above and beyond the normal. Traffic that we would typically have from the farm, whether they're big trucks or not. And so you will start to see that breakdown quicker because of this large scale solar production, we're talking thousands of acres of. Glass coming in to be put in, there's a lot of trucks coming and going, um, for just that limited amount of time. But yeah, road use agreement was kind of our solution to help with that, but.
Realistically, we've never seen more than eighty migs going in one year and that was in twenty. So forty, fifty three migs coming in South Lake and forty migs went in North Lake last year.
Right.
This is the biggest increase we've seen since we've been doing business with them. And all those projects are at a hundred percent completion, they're done with their construction, so the road. But those road costs and maintenance costs need to be captured with the CUP fees at the beginning to anticipate that. They did the same thing with Ruby Pipeline, they destroyed a lot of our roads, you know, when they, when they did that.
And we had an agreement with them and they gave us a four hundred thousand dollar check, plus we got three or four hundred thousand dollars worth of rock. They negotiated all of it.
But I mean, I mean, that's, that's, that's needs to be done at the beginning of the, of the process.
And 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 I think it typically is, but no, like going back to this with this, the. I I understand that we're, if we tax it at the regular rate, it gets devalued pretty quick, it goes down. I just, I I'm, I'm kind of holding out here because, uh, I'm not entirely convinced that it will just, just plummet. I like the fix rate, I do, I just, I I'm not comfortable with just continually giving, giving, giving. Uh, and trying to incentivize solar companies who in my opinion are already incentivized. Because you're not going to build these anywhere else but here in this part of the state.
So. Well, no, I I'm trying to get back, um, in my own mind here. Korea was set up and it basically is supportive of renewable energy.
Yes.
That's what that subcommittee, not subcommittee, it's an actual, um, group that you can go on. And and so they're really, whenever that group's looking, they're, they're looking to promote renewable energy. Whether it's wind, solar, whatever, renewable.
Yeah.
Hydro. So the example is you get over to transportation where the, it's not admission of that group. They're saying, whoa, just, just a minute, this doesn't really make sense, you get to Board of Commissioners here. We're saying, whoa, that, that doesn't really fit. And so I, I think Korea is sort of in a position that they were formed to set up in support of renewable energy. It started with, I think Sherman County and with the.
Yeah.
The first SIP that came through.
Yeah, I remember many others, yeah.
And so, um, I would say that group is going to need more towards trying to find a way to be supportive of solar.
And the developers.
And the developers. You, you brought this, excuse us to us, and all of us, um, which commissioners' opinions may be different than. Number counters or even assessors and everything too because of, we start bringing politics into it.
Well, and, yeah, it's true, I'm cognizant of that, but that's why I, I didn't want it to be solely a political thing either. I wanted to make sure that I was being fully rounded and having a discussion with everyone here. You guys have been part of this process, all four of you have been part of these solar projects and every single major one, we have.
I was on the chamber board and we, our slogan is the most renewable county in Oregon.
Still think we are.
Well, our goal was to get to neutral, I thought you were going to call it. I lost my train of thought there, Sergeant David, David said there. Oh, he is talking about, uh, the biggest ones we've had was in twenty twenty. But we know that what's on the table right now was blue marmot and up north, they're huge. We've got a SIP in place for the other one up there.
For four hundred bay, it'll be the largest solar farm in North America.
Yeah, so we, we know that's, that's some proposals out there that may or may not be approved through the SIP. And then we even have one of those that has narrowed it down. To a couple, three twenties to go into their big project, so they work every angle they can. And they're just working in another angle, you're right, um, but I guess my point, whenever it's going to go through this EFC process where is our guarantee on our roads? Whenever we go through a conditional use process, we can put that road agreement in there. This conversation really helped me because I I haven't really pulled that together, we're going to have that big of development. What's in there for protection for our roads?
So I would just make that comment, that we have now, uh, you know, in the past, we didn't have that as part of the conditional uses, it was it was kind of overlooked. But now the most recent projects have had a a conditional approval, that there is a road maintenance agreement on record before, um, and during, after, uh, it's all looked at. So I would just say, we may comment to to EFSEC that we we say that that is something that we're requiring now. Um, it's not in our criteria, but it is something that's added to the conditional.
We we gotta do that, so that part of this outership.
Yeah, we.
No, it's good it came out of this.
Yeah, no, but and
Just make that call.
And and Blue Marmot, for instance, they are trying to work out a road disagreement with us currently already and have been in good conversation with myself and the road superintendent together. And they're trying to look that out, I just, I just didn't want to drill in holes in our road anymore, so.
And Brad, isn't, I mean, sorry to interject, but shouldn't that be something for every development, whether it's solar or not? I mean, I just think it should be everything.
Yeah, for any large scale, yeah.
I'm not I'm not thinking of any reason why you're wrong, I.
Yeah, it's.
I'm not, I'm not, I I.
I mean, thank thank goodness the the development we've had lately has been solar, but let's hope that there's other development too, but we obviously want something like that in our.
It's been asked, and there hasn't been, I believe it will continue when our conditional use comes through, our road officials notify. And we have very much, James, I talked to, encouraged our road official that there's going to be impacts to the roads, for it to be brought up to the conditional use.
I was thinking.
And it doesn't matter what kind of development, that that is, that is something that we we've captured through some of the road changes. Um, so I think we're there, I think.
Yeah, it's always been part of the criteria, you know, under general services, um, and we've always noticed the road department, every other, uh, department agency. So it just hasn't, hasn't been applied until recently.
We don't really have a draft, you know, standard RUA that we can hand out there to a developer and say, this is kind of what we're looking for.
Right.
And have that kind of criteria, we've never really had that in place, but we're working on it and we have, we have several templates that we're looking at. And just just to see what works best, and I'll bring that before the board once we have something that's actually viable.
I can basically speak to Red Rock, there's a lot of traffic stuff, there's different things done.
Right.
Yeah, the impact, even looking at it right in turn, um, but it can be lost on development, on the impact to count roads.
Oh, one of the things that came up with Blue Marmot discussion was that they were wanting to restore the roads and no, no, and and have leave the roads in no worse condition than they were when they found it. But in order to establish what condition they were in, they said they were gonna have to drill some holes, go through with some machines that would basically, you know, pound the ground, look for vibrations and different things, and find out how well it was actually built. But we just paid most of those roads and just chip seal them, so drilling holes in the in the right tire path would would every five miles was gonna be a major source of contention, and and it definitely was, so we we tried to work around that and come to a better agreement over something that we both feel is fair. And they said they were gonna hold off on doing any of those studies, but they were, you know, I said, we're really upfront about how our roads were built and what the specs were used, we can show you. Um, it's not like we're a podoc operation or a county operation, and we keep records of how we build these roads in the first place, so we can show that.
The way we dealt with Ruby is we actually videotaped the roads.
Yep, and and we we talked about that, doing two, doing videotaping of the roads and looking for the cracks and the situation, the conditioning. But anyway, uh.
And and one thing you might want to put in there, because it was a good tool, and that one, that'll be brought back to the standard that the road official approved. That gives you strength when it gets down to the argument.
Yeah.
One last thought that that I think, you know, this brand brought up in in the conditional use hearing process, and you've probably heard the developers talk about this before too, is that, you know, the line capacity of the the high voltage, um, transmission lines that we have out there. Um, you know, there's a queue, and so, you know, one of our developers has, you know, a lot of that queue already spoken for, and then one of our other developers is lower on the queue, but they've already had a lot of those conditional use approvals granted to them.
Yep.
And so, you know, um, but the one developer that's high on the queue has said that, you know, you're, we're pretty close to seeing the amount of solar that we're gonna see, uh, on the on the lower end of the, the like.
Unless another line goes in.
But the higher line, there's still some capacity there, but that's through the EFC process where they can interconnect to that, so.
Right.
You know, without adding more transmission, and if you look at the B two H from Boardman to Hemingway project in eastern, northeast Oregon, it, I mean, it's been ten fifteen year project and ongoing, and still no, you know, end in sight, uh, on on adding additional transmission line, so, you know, you know, we have nine hundred roughly acres developed in solar right now, generating almost a million dollars. I wish we could say we could, you know, you know, times that by a hundred and and we'd still, you know, get all this new revenue. But the fact is, we won't see this, you know, we won't see a million acres or even fifty thousand acres of solar in this area.
Agreed, agreed, my my, the whole reason I'm bringing this to you guys is because the nine hundred acres is generating almost a million dollars right now. And say, we had all these other sites put forward and everything else, and you were able to multiply that to the number that you that you have in your head right now, and we all kind of had. Um, is about to have some subtraction brought into the equation.
And it's out of our hands, and yet we don't have to agree to a pilot, and so, you know, if we don't support it, I I'm kind of in that.
So so back back on the power lines, you're exactly right, the gravy's all been taken. And that's, the developers go over their substations, and these distance apps go from there. And and so, you're right, but there will be more power lines built.
If if the need's there, the market will adjust for it, and they will put in more lines, if they can see that we're the ones that are developing the solar and the dams are going away, and there's no other option. Transmission lines will be.
And we said in a place where our sun, the amount of sunlight we have in here makes it possible for them to be here.
And I understand we can't make everyone happy, but, well, what do they say, any deal you walk away from that where nobody is happy is a good deal? Is that it, is that true, or I'm not sure I've heard that one. Any deal that you walk away from where nobody is happy was a good deal?
That works off.
All right, well, we got this.
It was fair, it was fair. So, I mean, there's, uh, we may not come out where everyone's happy, we're not trying to make everyone happy, but our responsibility as county commissioners, as county employees, as county elected officials, is not to just make everyone happy. Our responsibility is to look after the interests of Lake County, and that's what I I wanted to bring this to you guys all for.
Whenever we look at the taxation, you know, for years, I've always tried to keep the top twenty taxpayers in Lake County pretty close in my mind who they are. And it has changed over since two thousand and ten, I guess it is.
Oh, wait.
Um, oh, eight, and what do we have in the top twenty, how many of them are solar?
Predominantly it's solar. And forestry. I know, and the pipeline.
Yeah, I know the top twenty, it's really nine of the top.
The pipeline is the number one.
If the four hundred bay project goes in, I'll see Ruby.
Yes. Solar will be done.
Two of those. Oh, we're getting out there.
And from a numbers game, it's hard to not go there.
Ooh.
It's, I'm not saying don't go there, I'm I'm, I am there, I I.
I know.
I, my my point, you know, I did make a crack earlier, I'll admit it's a smart aleck remark about the fact that one, make megawatt of solar under the pilot, the amount of money that the county actually receives in our discretionary funds doesn't cover our toilet paper costs. Um, you you're wrong.
I think I disagree on that one. Anyway.
Okay, throw in some paper towel in there, but it's just, go ahead, Dave, you have something on your mind, you.
I think you guys have beat this to death, that's a number you gotta come up with, I truly believe that the cost of generating solar has dropped considerably for the technology and the ability to make panels from what it was in two thousand and eight.
Right.
And so, we want to stay competitive, we want to stay in the market, and you guys need to figure out what that's gonna look like.
Uh, we, I think, uh, we will. I mean, one of the, one way or the other, we have to make a decision on what we're gonna do, and I'll, I I just, I wanted to at least have a fully rounded decision, uh, discussion with my board, so you guys were aware of.
Well, life and markets always changing, we have to adapt to it, we need to be in our best interest and and try to think about it the best way we can. So that's, that's why you guys are commissioners and I'm not, so there you go.
Well, appreciate you coming and beating this horse to death with us, so.
Good luck with all of that. Appreciate you taking the time, Dave. Okay, so we, uh, we have one o'clock.
We have a one o'clock, but I think everything else is done.
Yeah, are they coming back in person? Are are they coming in person or?
Uh, I think they may have a few guys come in person.
Okay.
Melanie, do you know if they're coming in person or are we just gonna do all go to?
Um, there might be one or two people in person, but I think most of them are going to re- attend down here.
Sounds good.
Okay, we'll recess till one o'clock, meeting that's nine o'clock five, people think silence or shut off their cell phones, join us in pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands on its edge. Invisible, which under the name of this is our office's throne. Okay. Glad you're able to participate, Melanie.
Thank you.
So we have a couple of additions.
Yeah, I have, um, three additions, I have the solar committee discussion, um, sorry, funding commissioner appointment or conditions and master design engineering service agreement with ACOM.
Okay, any other deletions or additions? Okay, Garvins have not joined us, we have the nine o'clock time for them, so we'll jump around, and if they get online, we'll come back to them. So. Might as well go ahead and do, get the ACOM thing out of the way. As an addition, okay. Who's the lead on that? Dave.
Morning.
Morning.
As you guys know, this is kind of hitting us around, this kind of new ACOM agreement with the landfill, uh, this is, uh, we've already been in in an agreement, or in a contract, not a contract, an agreement with them on some engineering service, we're just gave them a little, we asked them to give us a little bit more duties, I don't know if we call it duties, but, uh, a little bit more service from ACOM, you know, in the past, to to cover, uh, more of the monitoring, more of the reporting, more of the stuff that Buddy and I believe Commissioner Winters worked on this a few weeks ago. So we wanna move forward on it, we are waiting, the EQ is kind of waiting on some of this agreement, kind of do some compliance stuff that we gotta get into, we're waiting on this, so, and and I'll let Jay take it over, he knows a little bit more about it than I do. But this is, this is a genius idea, I think it's Brad's idea, he and Buddy talked to ACOM a couple of weeks ago, but, um, you know, we're, we're not sanitation engineers, we're not hydrologists. It looks like everyone around the state is, a lot of landfills are using ACOM, and they're using them more than we were. They're having them follow through and make sure that the reporting is done, the plans are updated, you know, all those things that we require for our compliance. So, all this does, and this is kind of, I think, what Buddy and Brad, Commissioner Winters had asked them to do, is just take one step further, make sure that, you know, they're actually filing those reports. They're, you know, getting approval on the updates to plans, to closures, to, you know, all that stuff, so that, you know, we can be confident that we're staying in compliance. Right now, we're we're not, and like Dave said, the EQ is, I think, happy that we're going, we're entering into this kind of agreement, because otherwise they would be flipping the hammers.
So many things been used twice, I haven't been in the loop on this since we had the discussions, I'll go ahead and give you my full on it. Whenever we got ahold of ACOM, it was to get a scope of work, so that we could probably get three different quotes. This one came in, you don't have any other quote, you don't have any other idea about any other cost, haven't checked with even the local engineering thing. I think it's a great idea to do that, but for seventy-four thousand, almost seventy-five thousand dollars to not get comparable quotes, probably not why it's spinning. Whenever Buddy and I set this up, it was to get a scope of work, within this, there's a lot of things to find out within this, it doesn't even include doesn't even include the closure side of it, which is above and beyond it. There's a lot of questions to ask, there's a lot of things to sit down and talk about, and follow up on. So, so for me, it it's pretty simple, because I'm not one to have to worry about the budget, I'm not one to have to worry about everything, because I'll be gone in January. But I highly recommend this board to look at, to do some comparables, and make sure that you're not just going with the first quote that comes through. Or it might be the appropriate quote, we'd have to have some checks and balances, and you have to find out what what the comparables are out there for doing the same work.
So Dave and I talked about this, um, this isn't a contract, this is a an agreement for the kinds of services we want them to provide, but it's it's an agreement to, you know, we would pay them on a time and material basis. So they would bill us for work that they do, if they don't do the work, they don't bill us, we don't pay them, we could hire someone else to do any, any one of, or any, several of these things. Dave has had an initial conversation with the local engineer, and, but his thought, our thought, is that we get this in place, and then we can do some more, some more looking, um, the EQ's anxious first, you you've addressed that, I can.
Well, that's what they're waiting, the guy I talked to, Michael Kennedy, said, with, Buddy called him on this, this was a cushion or to keep the EQs from coming after, or type deal, I don't know, I don't know, but they come in, so Buddy told this Michael, the EQ Michael Kennedy, that you need to get this in place, we'll let you guys get something in place of what you're gonna do, because we're not in compliance, and then we'll look. They'll look into that on a later day.
They wanted to give us.
We get into something with the engineer where it covers what we're doing, because right now, we're not in compliance with the BEQ standards. And that's from three different BEQ people that I've talked to since I started, so they're, they're on us, they're calling me, they're sending me stuff this week on what we're not compliant with, so, uh, they're looking forward for us to get something like this in place, so we can get it.
So which part are we in non-compliance on?
Several. Of like reporting, the quarterly reporting, some of the testing, the stormwater testing that we haven't done. Operational plans, they would have, they don't know if it's been approved or not, so there's several, several things to this that I'm, I'm getting feedback. I mean, I, I don't know the past, so it's hard for me to kind of explain all what happened in the past, but I do know what the EQ is asking of Lake County right now. But I've been on, I've been in contact with by several different ones, from three different ones so far, that have been sent in, so, and I'm kind of getting off track here.
So, and I'm kinda getting off track here.
Was it the twelve hundred, um, contract, the twelve hundred permit?
No.
Twelve hundred Z permit?
No, I know, we already took care of that.
Okay.
This is just the storm monitors, the, I don't know what term I'll DM still.
Well, the, the revised, doesn't the twelve hundred Z permit fall under the stormwater pollution?
Yeah, that's the permit.
Yes.
You still got reporting that you have to do in stormwater.
So, uh, Commissioner Winters, you're saying that originally, you just wanted this as a scope of work?
Whenever Buddy and I met with the DEQ and with ACOM, um, at that time, it was sort of a little bit different direction. The county's went, was working for, with Jay, and some employees out there, different structure than right now. Right, and, and set up to utilize a couple of different people. Uh, ACOM was the first one we got ahold of to run a contract with them.
All right.
I don't even know if, if this is in addition to the seventy-five thousand dollars cap, in addition to what they already are getting paid or not.
Well, that, that's what, it's not an addition, it's a total. So we've been paying them somewhere in the sixty thousand dollar range.
Looking at.
We may not pay them any more than we have in the past, it just depends on.
So you're saying all the work that they're doing now is encompassed in this?
Yeah.
That's not the way it came across when I met ACOM.
That's the way it reads, um, it's a not-to-exceed number, so for all these tasks.
For this, but all, all of the other things they were doing, uh, prior to this.
They've been, they were doing these things, but they weren't, they weren't taking that step further. They weren't getting to the point where they would submit the, the reports and.
So it's clear as none?
What, what's clear is, this is, these six tasks are everything that we need to do to be in compliance. They're going to assure that we're, we're staying up on those, except for the operational plan, I think. And that's something that we have, but I guess it never been, and then it's, it's repeated here, it's also on the closure. So, closure's included, and I'm not sure what part of closure you're talking about, but task four is the closure documents. Are you talking about the, or that's the plan, I mean.
So, uh, just for a second here, Ross and Kelly, who's on the line, uh, Ross and Kelly will be just a few minutes, we're gonna finish this item, and then we'll get right to you.
No worries.
So, you know, they would update the plan as required, and then follow through with the, the closure certification report. Actually, it does not include closure certification report tasks. Yeah, I don't know what else there is to.
But were, but were they under, did they have that requirement before in the previous contract?
No.
So it's basically whether or not we actually even want to include that.
Yeah, and that, that's the way they, that's the reason they haven't included it, because it's something that they think that either we need to do, or we can do without their help.
So was that included in the scope of work originally? Didn't sound like that was even asked of.
Yeah, I don't know what was asked of them. But, in task number six, we have a kind of a catch-all, they will provide consultation.
Number six?
I think that's kinda where we're at, of course, maybe start over, where maybe slightly out of compliance. To get caught up, we might have to have them, you know, help us with some things that they would normally be helping with, helping us with on a year-to-year basis. But again, you'll notice there's no termination clause or expiration date, this isn't a contract, it's, these are the services we want them to provide, but, we can have them provide them, or we cannot have them provide them. If they don't provide them, they won't pay, if we don't pay them, we could hire somebody else to do that, so I think, this would get us on the ground rolling and get us to that position where we can actually start working with DEQ. This is basically what they're waiting for, was my understanding, was for us to, yeah, sort this portion of the issue out. Do you have any other thoughts on this?
Hey, look, I don't have any questions. You and Mark need to need to make calls with ACOM with DEQ, like I suggested before, that's what I suggested to use it.
Yeah.
To do that, so. You're at a point, you don't have much choice. If you don't have the person that has, they're already done all this, everything.
Right.
You're, you don't, it's down to crunch time.
Well, you've been, you've been in touch with Buddy, you kinda talked to him a little bit about this.
Very little.
Yeah, on this particular subject, yeah. And you have reached out to the other surveyor, county surveyor?
Uh, little bit, I've reached out with, uh, Bill Iman. Very little. So, so can we make it a temporary deal until we go through the procedures to, look to see if we, if there's other people that can do the job?
Well, Commissioner, it sounds like it's not a contract, so whatever is not in compliance, you can go to whoever you want. It doesn't mean, uh, I mean, uh, I don't look at it that way, I look at signing that that is an agreement, which is the same as a contract, it's an agreement for services. But that, I'm being told during the meeting that it's not. So if that's the case, if it piecemeal out, what can be done locally, you just go locally and have them do it. If you're in a hurry to get into compliance with the stormwater, or whichever other one, or it's a compaction, or if it's the closure of the landfill, or there's a lot of things that have been done on the closure of the landfill. That's in the process right now, so, um, but what's being said in the meeting today is, is that whatever section of this you need to be done, you just pay four days and you get it done.
But it's not to exceed.
Not to, well, that sounds more like a contract to me.
Well, yeah, but it is, it's an agreement for services.
But don't we have, don't we have to get three quotes for anything over five thousand bucks?
I, that's where I started the conversation at, Commissioner. ACOM is probably the one, but for, uh, following the rules and everything, you would think you would get three quotes, especially for, and there's quite a bit of landfill work had been done locally on engineering and things over the years. Just to give opportunities and, uh, cover your guys' faces.
Well, my understanding was there were, sorry, Dave.
I'm just saying, I feel that we can do that.
Yeah.
We can go get three quotes. We're having the discussion, okay, we can go do that, it's not show stuff, I feel that I can go and get three quotes. But as we got this, I didn't know all the where everything went, so we were just trying to go down, to get to do this. And I can, so what, what I'm asking, right, I could go and get three quotes, that's, that makes sense to me.
What would you say, Commissioner?
Go ahead, Mark.
So I, what I'm asking is, so can we go ahead and use them, so we're, get into compliance, and then go ahead and get three quotes?
Well, I would say the priority thing right now is to get the quarterly, uh, things caught up on the stormwater. There's, uh, the stormwater out there, there's work needs to be done at the site itself because of the Ecoli is too high. And the Ecoli is too high because rodents and other animals, and work that needs to be done. So there has to be some physical work done. There's a place in Klamath that you can actually send, uh, samples to. And you have to get your quarterly things caught up that were behind, that's probably the first and foremost priority, to my knowledge. And then you have all of your other normal operations out there that has fallen behind. You're in the middle of a contract on landfill closure. It has to be degraded, it has to be documented, it has to all be done by the rules. That is a thing that was not put in the scope of work from ACOM because of, uh, Buddy believed he was able to do that, I don't know where that's at.
But it was never, but it was, was it ever in the former contract, or the former agreement that we had with ACOM?
No. So our landfill manager took care of all these things that we're asking ACOM to do now.
Right.
That's all part of the duties of
Right.
the landfill supervisor.
Right.
And so, now, it makes perfect sense, because the jargon, the DEQ jargon and everything goes with it, to contract out by the, whoever is your landfill manager, and the hunter skill levels they have, and the other education they have, should be the knocks in these things off, but then your cost doesn't go up to seventy-five thousand. So, that, that's, that was the structure that I was working on for you guys to be able to take and go forward. Um, but it's where it's at now, but that, that, that will help you to be able to reduce your ACOM contract, if that's where you go. I don't want to apply with you as a, any of those. But you do need an engineer, remember, somebody to get your landfill manager has, they get educations, a training, and reduces those costs. Because they start to come, getting on the house. So you're basically, when we use, whatever this is, as a trainer, you have to pay to train somebody, hopefully for the long term.
Right. But, I mean, the whole original point of this agreement was to reduce the amount, um, reduce the learning curve, so to speak, of whoever took it over, and also to, to help them, and to reduce the amount of work that they'd have to do, and to get us back into compliance. That's why the scope of work was put out for in the first place, am I mistaken?
I'm not sure, not really, but the scope of work was absolutely to get us out of compliance.
Right, right. But, we're, we're looking at ACOM, who we're already in agreement with, and trying to get us back to that point. So, to simply, yeah, I just tried to figure out, and we felt like we were going two different ways there, and I was trying to understand.
Yeah, I was thinking way past the moment. Be known as a plan for operations for the county.
Right.
A plan for reduced cost for the county, as far as engineering costs, and they continue to find, they just continue to find. So you get the operations built around the expertise to cut those engineering costs there.
I understand what you're saying there.
And so, I was, I was, wow.
I'm just not sure that that's not what we're doing now.
It, it, I'm good. I, I just, I've just been thinking out there for you and Mark to think about. Because this doesn't go away. Other than structure, we would decide to build with this.
Have we talked to legal counsel about being able to purchase services a la carte, um, for the time being, and then sign the agreement afterwards? Would that work for your raises, short term?
Well, I brought this to legal counsel, and he, he said it was appropriate, so.
So he didn't mention needing to get three quotes?
No.
But, but it's a la carte, is that how that works?
No, I, I, you broke up there a little bit, Melanie, I think.
So, since we're just using certain services, it's kind of like an a la carte menu, does that get us around with three quotes, is that what he said?
Well, it's, it's not a, I don't know if it gets us around it, it's just, it's not a contract, it's, it's, it's a simple agreement not to exceed. And we're already in agreement with these guys, we're just, we're looking at what else they can help us with. And, uh, kind of expanding it slightly. To try and help us get back further into compliance, but we already have an agreement with these guys, and it's been in existence. When was the actual original agreement?
Two thousand seventeen.
Oh, okay.
We had a different one before them. Mark Inger?
Inger.
Yeah, that's right.
Inger.
Associate.
Right, okay.
So October two thousand seventeen is when we started with ACOM.
Okay, that's right. Well, I'm, I'm comfortable, we can, we can put this forward for action tomorrow, or more discussion. We got, and Garvins on the line, so.
Okay. All right, Mark, James is good with, uh, action consideration tomorrow, are you good?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to Ross and Kelly.
Commissioner Winters, can I just ask Melanie a question real quick?
Yes.
Okay, Melanie, is everything functioning properly, you feel comfortable with the meeting and stuff?
Everything, I'm seeing.
Okay, thank you, I'm, I'm leaving then.
Okay, thanks, Nikki.
Yeah, I'll come turn everything off when it's over.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mel, all right. Thank you. Okay, thank you for being on, oh, Melanie. All right, Ross and Kelly, we have you, uh, give us an update on supportive housing.
Yes, and Ross got tied up in another meeting, so I apologize, he just, he just hit me, and we didn't want to take up too much of your time, but somebody suggested, um, that we give you an update, we done it for the, um, the hospital board recently as well, and, um, we're, we're, we're moving forward, um, we feel like, um, it's obviously been a challenging, uh, process thus far, uh, but we we anticipate that the rest of it going significantly smoother than it has to date. We, um, we have MOUs from key partners that, uh, were important for the next phases, and we are a high priority as far as, as funding for the project, so it is, it is moving forward. Um, and I, I mean, we're, we're basically reaching out in hopes that if there is any specific concerns or requests that you at the county level have, that we can integrate those into the process as we, as we move ahead. It's currently at architecture, um, for preliminary drawings, and now would be a, a good time if there's specific things people have input on to integrate those.
Awesome.
Okay, did you have any questions, or feel free to reach out to us if things come up, um, it, it's easy to get moving ahead on a project, and thinking everybody knows what's going on, and, and oftentimes, there's voids in the, in the knowledge transmission, so.
Yeah, I, I don't really have too many questions, the update sounds good, glad things are kinda moving along. Yeah, so, I was just thinking about the project last month, kind of wondering where things were at. And I hadn't had a chance to kind of look back with, uh, Kristy Albertson or any of the other folks, so, no, this is good to know.
Yeah, they're meeting regularly, and everybody has, um, you know, once the holidays are over, a, a number of things will kick in to gear, um, but we anticipate funding by spring.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
I have, you, you've been working on that for the most part, or working with that group for the most part, not this particular one, the group. I have no questions, Commissioner Albertson, any questions?
No, I don't have anything, thank you.
All right, thanks for giving me a few minutes, you guys have a Merry Christmas.
You too, thank you, Dylan.
Thank you, Kelly.
Bye-bye.
See you guys.
So we, everything else is timed, except for we got the mining commission reappointment request.
Yeah, and then we have the EOCI, IGA, Darwin's not here, actually, just, just going to text you.
Okay, he wanted to have some solar committee discussion.
Yes. Well, that, that'd be good, I don't know why it's up here, so.
I just noticed.
Yeah, I was going to hand it to Dave, but it ended up, you had to get it up again, so. But yeah, the EOCI, IGA, I think I printed you out a copy of that as well.
Yes, you did.
Um, so. I'm gonna go back over this actually real quick, if, if my board will indulge me really briefly, just to kind of skim through this again, because this is a new fresh copy, I don't have any notes or anything on it.
Well, Commissioner Albertson, we're on the EOCI, IGA.
Do you have a copy of that, Mark, you should have it in your email?
Yeah, I do.
Was there anything that you wanted to discuss?
I'm, I'm good with the agreement.
I don't, I don't think there are really any changes to this.
It doesn't say what the cost is.
It has the dues, that's what I was looking for, because I couldn't remember what the dues structure was.
Ten thousand dollars, if I remember right.
Right.
Yeah.
This one, it says.
They pay ten thousand dollars.
Is it, is it still ten thousand, it hasn't changed? Because this says.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
And that'll be due again in July.
Okay. It says the county's dues shall not, shall be in accordance with the dues schedule adopted April twenty twenty. And I don't remember there was anything changed back in April for their dues structure, if they adopted a different dues structure. Or if they, if they, if they modified it, so to speak. I'm, I'm good with it aside, that was, that was the thing that I was looking at when I was reading it, that I didn't actually see a, a price on it or an actual number, cost, so. Maybe, Mark, do you, do you have any notes on that, or do you, do you remember?
It was, the last time that I seen the dues structure, it was ten thousand dollars.
Okay, so as far as, to our knowledge, it hasn't changed. If we're. Okay. Well, if we have this on our agenda for action tomorrow, it might be good to just look at exactly what that cost is going to be and if it has changed. And maybe, maybe me or you, we could reach out to Paul or Matt, or any of the folks in Alala County and find out if, if there was any changes, if not, I'm comfortable with it.
Oh, I'll just follow that straight now, and while I'm on, can Melanie, can you have Josh call me after the meeting's over? So I can get my computer up here at home.
Okay, she's giving you a thumbs up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that'll be for action tomorrow. Did Darwin respond to your text?
Yes, he did.
Yes, he did.
So, is there anything preventing us from moving, from having this, doing this even in January? If we didn't want to do it right now?
What did that, the?
Uh, the EOCI agreement.
Well, you've already paid the dues, this is just an agreement.
Right, the, the agreement for going forward, I, I just, I was wondering if it might be good to have Commissioner Elect be involved in, in this process and be part of that discussion as well. So he can kind of start working with us on those things and stuff, or he can be part of that decision.
I don't have a problem with that myself at all, that, that's.
But we've already paid the dues, I'm just wondering if maybe this, this, it would give us an opportunity to at least have that discussion with him in January.
Yep, well, and I, I, yeah, I think that'd be fine.
Mark, do you have any problems with that?
No, I, I don't have any problems with it, but we can go from there.
Okay.
You don't have a fight here first.
Yeah.
But it starts, I appreciate that it starts out the ownership with.
Those are the, these are the associations that we kind of work with, and there, there are some different issues on the B side of Oregon and rural Oregon, but and this kind of shows why, you know, Commissioner Albertson and I kind of felt it was important. And even before our time, there was, you know, the previous board, you and the other commissioners felt that it was important, at least at one point in time. And I, I'm trying to be cognizant and disrespectful of the fact that, of your position on this as well.
Well, I'm, I'm not opposed, I just think the dues are a lot for what she did. And it's dealt over a lot of the other association work, or sometimes it, it doesn't complement, or they don't communicate well. But I think there's people that are starting to push and work and that is changing some. So I, I believe that the EOCI, Eastern American Coalition or whatever, I remember what that was. I believe that there, there's people that are starting to understand that the value of AOC and EOCI and everything has to come closer to them, right? And it, it may cycle someday, but it's just a subgroup of AOC, you don't know, right? But.
So, so I just talked to Jeanne Niffle about it, probably a month or two ago. And she thinks that at two hundred eight, EOCI also is a very good trend. Because I didn't want to step out and, and ruin our relationship with AOC. And so I was just making sure that her own, I think they can cheat, but trying to make EOCI also is a good idea.
I think, I think things did change with the lobbyists. I think having the same lobbyists for both groups, and in my opinion, I'm just, I'm speaking pretty openly here. I, I think the idea of both associations taking a large amount of dues to pay the same lobbyists to do the same job was a, a big part of some of the frustrations that were coming out of, you know, why the membership kind of went away. And, and for the amount of, and what we were getting out of it at the time, I actually would agree, probably wasn't, wasn't worth what we were putting in. And I mean, Rocky's doing a pretty fantastic job, he's very involved, and he's got a lot of connections at the state capital and, and back in DC. So it's, it's been good to kind of have him on board. So there have been some changes, there's been changes in the structure and the leadership and everything, and kind of, and even the goal and kind of what we're wanting to do.